Oh, please, this sounds like sicrela or something.
So you got, do you have my presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Moore, I do have 7:00 PM if you'd like to call the meeting to order.
Thank you very much, Lauren. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll start the City Council meeting, a joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, May 11, 2021. Ms. Burgess, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Thank you very much. And City Manager Obed, if you could kindly introduce who else is with us from staff, as sometimes I fail to do that.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we have Craig Gott, our Director of Public Works, City Engineer, Angela Porter, our Director of Administrative Services, Noah House, our Community Development Director, Mike Parrish, our Police Chief, John Barker, our City Attorney, JP Aries, our Senior Planner, and of course, not to forget Lauren Burgess, our Fabulous City Clerk.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd just like to offer a moment of silence before we start the meeting, and especially in recognition of the recent gun violence and the loss of two officers in California, and some of the still unbelievable Asian-American Pacific Islander hate crimes. We could just take a moment to recognize that. Thank you all, and if you would kindly join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Aye, aye.
Non-state, it's America.
Non-state, America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which is to end. One nation.
Nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. It seems so odd to do the Pledge of Allegiance without standing. I will be looking for a motion on approval in a minute of the Katati City Council regular meeting of April 27, 2021.
Move to approve. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Second, this is Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, if you could kindly give us a roll call.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Measure S supports some police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katatacy.org. Citizens interested in receiving City Katati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 949312888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walking traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointment by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions, 7:30 to 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@katatacy.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website, social media channels, available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. And Mr. Obed, I think that on our City Hall opening, those hours are a little bit different right now.
They are, yes, thank you, Mayor. We'll get to the agenda, apologize about that.
Oh, not a problem. So, thank you. So I believe we would move on to presentations, and right now, we would have the presentation on the PG&E Community Wildfire Safety Program?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So tonight with us, we have Melinda Rivera with PG&E, who will be doing the presentation. And Lauren, could you go ahead and load the... Thank you very much. Go ahead, Melinda.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor, City Council Members, and City Manager and other city staff, for allowing me to meet with you this evening to provide a presentation on PG&E's Community Wildfire Safety Program. Next slide, please. Just take a quick moment for safety, wherever you might be and participating virtually or in person in the meeting this evening. Please make sure you're aware of your surroundings and that you are safe, that you have identified emergency exit routes if needed, and we encourage everyone to follow all necessary COVID-19 safety precautions. Next slide. Okay, wildfire risks across PG&E's service area. California continues to experience an increase in wildfire risk and a longer wildfire season. On this slide, there is a tool that PG&E uses when assessing wildfire risk in the community. This is the Fire Threat Map of California. This map was developed by the California Public Utilities Commission in conjunction with CAL FIRE, the US Forest Service, telecom providers, power utilities, and other public safety agencies. This tool, this map, helps to plan for potential wildfire and helps to focus prevention efforts. As you can see on the map, nearly one-third of the electric lines that provide PG&E customers with power are now in high-fire-threat areas. And you can find this map by visiting cpc.ca.gov/firethreatmaps. Next slide, please. What's New in 2021? In 2021, PG&E is continuing system hardening work on 180 electric circuit miles, conducting vegetation work on 1,800 high-risk electric circuit miles, tracking weather conditions and monitoring for wildfires by installing an additional 300 weather stations and an additional 135 cameras. PG&E is also installing over 275 additional distribution sectionalizing devices and transmission switches this year to limit the number of customers who are impacted by PSPS events by separating the electric grid into smaller sections. PG&E is also continuing to improve weather modeling and refining the forecasting through five-day forecast data. There are also some additional customer resources that have been put into place for this year. This includes expanding the language offerings, providing new address alerts, which allow customers and non-customers to sign up to receive PSPS alerts about any address they choose, providing more batteries for low-income medical baseline customers in high-fire-threat areas who are interested in receiving them, providing additional ADA-accessible community resource center sites, providing meal replacement options for those customers who are impacted, and expanding partnerships with community-based organizations to serve those customers with access and functional needs. Next slide. Sonoma County Overview. On this slide, there is an overview of the local wildfire safety and customer support efforts, including system hardening, sectionalizing devices, community resource centers, weather stations, and high-definition cameras. You can see there, for the last three rows, there is that phrase "ongoing" for 2021. So here in Sonoma County, the Department of Emergency Management is continuing to provide feedback on an ongoing basis, monthly or more frequently, to the public safety specialists at PG&E. So if there are areas in the county that the Department of Emergency Management identifies that could benefit from one of these resources, either a community resource center, or a weather station, or a camera, the Department of Emergency Management will reach out and share the location with PG&E. So PG&E can move forward with doing an analysis of that and determine feasibility. So based on that, we are still exploring and identifying where we can place some additional resources for this year. Quarterly progress updates can be found at pge.com/wildfiresafety. Next slide. What is a Public Safety Power Shut-Off? So Public Safety Power Shut-Off continues to be a necessary tool in the wildfire safety toolkit as a last resort for the safety of customers and communities. High winds can cause tree branches and debris to contact energized electric lines, damage equipment, and cause a wildfire. As a result, PG&E may need to turn off power during severe weather conditions for public safety. Please note that these events are always weather-driven and are only called when extreme weather and wildfire risks are present. Because electricity can travel several miles from the generation source to get to someone's home or business, that customer may be affected by a Public Safety Power Shut-Off if the electrical infrastructure that serves the customer is impacted by high winds and severe weather, even if the weather is miles away from that location. Next slide. What conditions could lead to a Public Safety Power Shut-Off event? So there are a combination of factors that are considered. This includes low humidity levels, which are generally 30% and below, a forecast of high winds, particularly sustained winds above 20 mph, and wind gusts that are above 30 to 40 mph, dry material on the ground and vegetation that may come in contact with a power line, a red flag warning declared by the National Weather Service, and any real-time on-the-ground observations from crews who are working in the territory. Every wildfire season is different, and the ongoing drought and the current conditions will determine the number of times that PG&E can, may shut off power. Next slide. How will customers be notified? So customers can expect to receive notifications two days before shutting off power when there is a Public Safety Power Shut-Off watch mode, one day before turning off power, when we are still in watch mode, just before de-energizing power lines, when we have moved into a warning phase, and then during the Public Safety Power Shut-Off event, once a day. And then there will be a notification once again when power has been restored. These updates will be provided to customers via, through automated calls, through texts and emails. We encourage everyone to review the contact information that PG&E has on file by visiting pge.com/mywildfirealerts. This year, PG&E has also launched address alerts for those who are not PG&E account holders. So with these alerts, you can receive updates on addresses that you care about, such as your work or your business, your child's school or daycare, or the home of friends or loved ones. There will also be PSPS updates that will be available on the website pge.com, on local news and radio outlets, and also on the social media websites we see listed here on this slide. Next slide. Customer Preparedness and Resources. So this year, PG&E is providing some additional resources by partnering with community-based organizations, expanding the in-language offerings, increasing meal replacement options by partnering with local food banks or with local Meals on Wheels organizations, collaborating with the California Foundation for Independent Living Center and their Disability Disaster Access and Resources Program to enable qualifying customers who use electrical medical devices to access backup portable batteries through a grant, a lease-to-own, or a financial loan application. There will also be additional batteries provided through the Portable Battery Program. This is available for low-income medical baseline customers who have critical medical needs. And then there is also a program that's been started this year that is, provides generator rebates for customers who depend on a well-water pump and who live in a high-fire-threat area. So PG&E is currently partnering with 24 community-based organizations in Sonoma County. And I'm sorry if some of those are not easy to see there on that particular slide. I'm not sure why. I had some technical issues, I guess, when I sent this slide, so I apologize. Next slide, please. So more information and tools to prepare are available online. These include the Public Safety Power Shut-Off Address Alerts, information available in languages, multiple languages, a weather and PSPS forecasting webpage, multiple languages, a weather and PSPS forecasting webpage, preparedness tools and activities for kids, the Safety Action Center, and the Backup Power webpage. So all of these websites and links can be found at the website pge.com/wildfiresafety. Next slide. So thank you very much, Mayor and council members, for your time this evening. I'm happy to stay and ask any questions that you or other community members might have. If there are any questions that I am not able to answer in the time we have, and if there are community members who are watching who would like to follow up and ask additional questions, you're welcome to give us a call at 1-866-743-6589, or you can also send an email to wildfire safety@pge.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. It does look like we have a couple of questions from the council. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Rivera, for the presentation. I think this is a concern that we all share with this summer coming, looking at the drought and the weather we may be looking at. We're certainly concerned about doing the best we can with PSPS events. And that leads me to the one question I wanted to ask you. I wonder if PG&E would be willing to start sharing all of the grid information related to this with the city of Cattati? And what I'm talking about specifically is things like, what addresses are at risk for PSP? Where we have insulated lines? Where you've added switches specifically? Where trees have been trimmed? Or, more importantly perhaps, where they haven't? And I suggest this because this information is needed for Cattati to make smart choices about emergency services, investments in backup power, construction of microgrids, and certainly, as we'll be discussing later tonight as part of our multi-jurisdictional hazard assessment that we're working towards. So I would imagine this is not terribly proprietary information, but more kind of a shared common concern we all have nowadays. So I wonder if you could speak to that for me?
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, that's an excellent question. So I believe that we are able to share a map that does have the information about sectionalizing devices. However, I have not yet been able to see that information yet for this year, so I don't know. Look, if you'll allow me to, I'd like to be able to follow up with you later this evening or later this week, and I can get back to you on exactly what information we can share or what we have that's still in development, that is upcoming, that we can provide you with that information that you need so that you can make informed decisions, especially while you're doing your mitigation planning.
That would be helpful. Obviously, a map of sectionalization would be part of the process, but I think at minimum it would have to be all of the things that I mentioned, hopefully, because they all clearly are part of it. But certainly, this is something I'd be happy to talk to you offline, whatever you could share with me, because I think our city could use that, and I suspect other cities in this region could use it as well. So I look forward to hearing your response back, and I'll share with my colleagues at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was interested in the section that you talked about, the Sonoma County overview. You talk about the system hardening and that the progress for 2021 is four line miles and the plan is 14. Given where we're at in the year, that seems reasonable that that may be completed. My question is on the next one, the sectionalizing devices. Only one has been done, and the plan is for 29. So it feels like we're pretty far behind on that and that the plan is not going to be met. Can you speak to me about that?
Yeah, I don't have specific data on kind of the timelines for where we are with construction of the additional 28 sectionalizing devices. You're right that, you know, about 90 sectionalizing devices have been installed in the last couple of years. So it does not seem unlikely to be able to install the additional 28, given how many have already been constructed in the last couple of years. But yes, I can certainly follow up and see if there is any possibility that we would not meet that goal of 29 sectionalizing devices for this year. That's a very good question. Thank you.
That would be wonderful to get back to us. And additionally, on the other three items that are ongoing, it sounds like you're waiting for more information from other areas outside of PG&E, and it would be nice when you get that information, that we could have that provided to us also.
Okay, yes, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Thank you for the presentation. I have one question and one comment. First, the question, the batteries that are available through a few programs to people with medical needs for continuity, do you know, I presume they're sized according to need, you know, what the particular medical need is? Are they, do you attempt to size them so that they will last whatever the claimed outside limits for a PSPS are?
So those, these portable batteries, they're kind of, how to say this? So the ones that have been deployed, like for the last year, I don't know yet who is the supplier or vendor, but for an example, last year, they were the Yeti batteries. They're kind of like the size of a car battery. So those are designed to assist individuals with, you know, powering-needed devices for a few days. Last year, we were fortunate, in 2020, we had power outages, but they were usually resolved, and power was restored within a few days. So what I've heard about the batteries is, I've had just positive feedback from last year for those who did receive the batteries, but definitely, as we move forward this year, I'm really encouraging everyone to sign up in advance. And actually, that's something, Councilmember Ford, I can send to City Manager Ovid. We have some one-page fact sheets on the portable battery program and also on the CFILC program. So for these battery programs, those are, those are programs that customers will need to sign up for in advance of a PSPS event, so that these things can be requested and applications can be processed, and the material delivered in advance of the PSPS event. So I will, after this meeting, I'll follow up and send those materials to City Managers so that those can be made available to community members so that they can better understand the process for putting in this application ahead of time. I definitely want to make sure that people understand how to get these batteries, if they have any questions about them, that they have time to ask those questions before a PSPS event starts.
All right. That'd be great. It would be sort of the worst of all worlds to give people false security. You give them a battery that only lasts for 24 hours and then have a PSPS that runs for longer than 24. So just want to make sure there's agreement between the battery provided and the potential length of PSPS. And then my comment was about the same table that Councilmember Harvey mentioned, showing progress on wildfire safety program efforts so far. And my concern about the total of 81 miles of system hardening, either completed or proposed by the end of 2021, in the context of 3,812 distribution and transmission lines in Sonoma County. So 81 miles of progress sounds like nothing, and I'm very concerned about PG&E's underinvestment in taking care of its infrastructure and the potential for damage to our community that that leaves us with. So if there's, this presentation would be much more helpful if there was also a number in there that gave PG&E's assessment of number of miles that need hardening. It's not very useful to know how many miles you've hardened out of 3,000. If we don't, if 2,900 of those are all great, then 89 miles sound pretty good. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I had a question about the community resource centers. I was just trying to look up on PG&E website where the closest ones were to our location, and it looks like that information's not available to the public unless it's in the middle of a PSPS. It says, "Check back again during a PSPS to find out where the centers are." I was wondering if you know where the closest centers would be to the Runner Park-Cattati area? And also, are they, why is it that that information's not available during non-crisis times? Is it because we're trying to maybe change it or be flexible? Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Councilmember. So the community resource center sites, when PG&E forecasts a few days ahead of time that there may be a public safety power shut-off event, our public safety specialist reaches out to that county's Office of Emergency Services. It's reviewed where there may be impacts from the public safety power shut-off events, and based on that information of which areas of a county might be impacted, the county OES then suggests to PG&E, from the list of sites that are in contract that can serve as a community resource center sites, which site the county would like PG&E to open. So, for example, last year, for the majority of the public safety power shut-off events, those customers were predominantly in eastern, the eastern reaches of Sonoma County. So rather than post a list of community resource center sites that may or may not be open during that particular public safety, public safety power shut-off event, PG&E will post them usually the day before the event is supposed to start, so that people know which sites will be open. We don't want customers to go to a site in Gurnville that is not going to be open because the PSPS impacts are predominantly, say, in the Sonoma Valley. So there are, basically, there are community resource center sites in all of the county supervisory districts. The ones that could potentially be open that are closest to the Cattati Runner Park area would either be in Santa Rosa or in Petaluma, really depending on where the customers are. Now, last year, we didn't have any public safety power shut-off events in Runner Park or Cattati. So really, those community resource center sites were open based on the proximity to the customers who were impacted. I hope that answers your question.
Just have one quick follow-up. Does that mean that there are no sites under contract potentially that are closer than Petaluma or Santa Rosa to here?
We do not have any sites in contract currently in Runner Park or Cattati. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I guess I would like to follow up on that a little bit, and it might be for Damian. What is it that we would have to do to ensure that there were closer sites? Because that's a pretty big gap, having to go to Petaluma or Santa Rosa, and it leaves out, you know, basically the whole middle of the county. So who would we have to work with to find a closer site and get them under contract before there's an actual emergency?
I'll just hop in real quick. I think that would probably be with county OES, so I could follow up with Chris Godley up there and see how they develop those contract sites.
That would be great, because I think it's better for us to be proactive than, you know, wait to find out that we have a bunch of people that we need to somehow get transported to Petaluma or Santa Rosa in the middle of an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes, listening to the discussion, some really good questions and obviously difficult ones to field right off the bat by the representative. But it occurs to me, we and the public might be better served if we were to invite Ms. Rivera or whoever PG&E had available, wanted to send, to follow up on the item she said she would follow up with us privately and personally with, so we could have this discussion briefly, perhaps at least in public, and resolve some of those concerns. I'm certainly interested in making sure that we have information shared in all the aspects we brought forward. I'd love to hear more about that. I think a couple of you brought forward things. Councilmember Ford, I know there were a few things that you weren't able to get full answers on tonight. I'd like for that's up to the City Manager and the Mayor to determine, as well as certainly if PG&E has the time and interest to do that. But I'd like to put that out there. I think it's perhaps better to do some of these questions that way rather than to remove it from the public view. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Do you think that that might be something that PG&E would be interested in providing?
Yes, I can definitely come back in the future if you feel, if that would be more helpful to the city, I'm more than happy to do that. Again, if we are in a PSPS event, I will do my best to be there for the time that council needs me to be in, just be aware that, as we head into fire season, I will, I'm trying to, trying to just be sensitive to making sure that I can spend the time that you need.
Thank you very much. And then I have one final question, Ms. Rivera. In 2019, were you part of PG&E when we had the PSPS here in Cattati?
No, I have worked for PG&E for less than a year. But I, you live in a community that, live in a residence that is, has been subject to PSPS events, so.
Well, the reason I ask that is it kind of piggybacks on Councilmember Ford's question regarding the batteries. And I believe, if I remember correctly, the last PSPS we had was, I think, four or five days. It was quite a few days, and I might be mistaken on that, but I know it was more than 24 hours.
Yes, yeah, I'm aware of that. That is, that was for transmission-level outage, and yes, I am aware that that did impact the city of Cattati.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Although it's not an action item, I am going to open up if there's any public questions or comment at this time for PG&E. We'll briefly open up for the public and see what we have, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. For our attendees tonight, you can use your raise-hand icon on your smart device or desktop. You can also dial *9 if you're using just your telephone. Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to appreciate PG&E for the batteries for low-income medically needing people. I have been concerned about that since the very first problem that we had, and I'm just thrilled to see it on your list and the things that you're ready to do. Thank you so much.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Ms. Rivera, thank you very much, and we look forward to speaking down the road with either yourself or another representative to follow up on that, and thank you for the presentation.
All right. Thanks very much, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening. So with that, we'll move on to approval of the final agenda.
Mayor, I would suggest one move of items. So under regular calendar 11, item 11C is electric bike program. I would suggest that we just move that up to the beginning of the regular calendar, so it'll be for 11A, because it's going to be, I think, a fairly brief item, and we have some people in the audience here for that, as well as Dana Turney with SCTA and JP Arias with the City Staff. So.
Thank you. I don't have any concerns with that. Any of the council have any concerns with that? I'm not seeing any. That'll be fine.
One quick mention, there are also people, a number of people here for item 11A. So if 11C starts to run long, I might move that we jump to 11B, I mean 11A, to get the public comment that's needed there.
In the middle of 11C, if we start running long on that?
I'm not sure what the process would be, but I just want to make sure we're not, people came to the meeting with one agenda in mind, and so I just want to make sure we're acknowledged. So as long as we believe 11C is going to be brief, which primarily depends on the presenters, not on us, I think, then we're okay.
Okay, and I can always cut them off, Councilmember Ford, if we need to. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll do that, move on that. Now we'll move to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during the period. on the agenda during the period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. Their mayor may extend time for reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, Ms. Burgess, if you would open up citizens' business?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Steve Monahan, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. This is Steve Monahan from the dispensary project that you recently granted an extension to about a month ago. I'm here to provide you with a quick update on the project. And I'm here to provide this update just to address some of the concerns that I heard during the dispensary extension city council hearing about a month ago. This is just an informational update to demonstrate that we are working diligently on this project. We've made our design reviews middle as of last Monday, May 3. I've been in communication with Mr. House, and I believe that what we have provided will be sufficient to be brought in front of the planning commission. We have requested to be on the June 7 calendar date, but I understand this to be a tight turnaround for city staff. And it may be that we are on the June 21 planning commission calendar. We're progressing with our renovation work on the property and are currently approved building permit. We're making good progress on that scope of work. We have commissioned our final set of construction documents associated with the design review process work. We are taking the risk of potential changes to that work from the outcome of the planning commission process. But we are taking this risk to expedite the review process and hope to present our construction documents ahead of the planning commission hearing, which I have discussed with Mr. House. We're working with city staff to ensure our utility connections are designed and implemented properly. We have initialized our process with PG&E and are making good headway on that front. And we are working diligently to ensure the project comes in on time expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan.
Eris Weaver, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Eris Weaver. I'm a Katati resident and the executive director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. May is National Bike Month. And as per usual, we are hosting a whole variety of activities and events throughout the month to celebrate that and encourage more people to get out on their bikes and out of their cars. I'd like to really thank the city and particularly Ashley in the Recreation Department for being supporters of Bike Month throughout the years. On Bike To Wherever Day, which is a rebranding of Bike To Work Day since so many more people are working from home, we're expanding that a little bit. That'll be Friday, May 21. And there will be an Energizer Station in La Flosa Park between 7:00 and 10:00 in the morning, giving out swag and encouragement and all that stuff. Some of the other events we have happening throughout the month. We have a Bike To It Challenge, which encourages people to pledge to ride a bike rather than take their car for destinations less than two miles. 60% of our greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. And 30% to 40% of trips in Sonoma County are under two miles, which most people can ride a bike to in, you know, 15 minutes or so. So we've got a lot of participation in that program. We have a number of free classes and workshops, some of them virtual and some of them in person throughout the month. We have an app offering opportunity to have a little friendly competition and pledge to ride a certain number of miles or days throughout the month and get in the drawing for a variety of bike-themed prizes. So a lot of stuff going on. One other event we have happening that same week that's a little more somber is the Ride of Silence on May 19 at 7:00 p.m., which is a Wednesday. This is an international event. It's a slow, rolling memorial to cyclists who have been killed on our roadways. We have an average of three cyclists killed on Sonoma County roads every year. This year, we have three different rides scheduled on that day, one each in Santa Rosa, Petaluma, and Sonoma. And those are getting kind of full. And so I am looking at possibly adding another one to start from Katati to go to some of the sites and memorialize and commemorate these folks. Anyone who would like information about any of these events can find them on our website at bikesonoma.org. Again, thank you for all of your support on these events throughout the years. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. And thank you for your efforts on behalf of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. It's a great organization.
Loriann Barber, go ahead.
Hi, it's Loriann Barber. I'm a resident of Katati. And I was one of the signatories on a letter sent to all the council members requesting that the city consider banning new gas stations in the city. And I'm here and maybe a few other people to ask if that can be agendized or when it might be agendized. I'm, you know, assuming that you all read it. But basically, we're in a climate emergency. The city has, you know, signed on to that. And so we need to take some actions. And it seems like this one makes a lot of sense. The city of Petaluma did it recently. It was the first one in the nation. They got a lot of publicity for that. There seem to be plenty of gas stations in Katati. So we don't believe there's need for new ones. Gas stations also have lots of, a variety of problems. But the main thing is that we need to move away from fossil fuel infrastructure and fossil fueling our transportation, which is a huge contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in Sonoma County. So we think this makes sense. And so just basically asking if you could, would be willing to put it on in a future agenda item. And a completely separate thing is that as a member of the public, I miss being able to see other members of the public and know who's at meetings. And I do know that, at least a friend told me that the city of Sebastopol runs their meetings in the meeting format instead of webinar. And so I just want to put that out there that it's a little weird being a member of the public at the city meetings in Katati, although I very much appreciate being able to participate from my home. So thank you all for your service, and I will end there.
Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Marjorie Crump shares, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to read something that a friend sent me. It was posted in Facebook. These are not my words. But there's a part of me that wishes I was the author of this. I need to drive my two-year-old to daycare tomorrow morning to ensure we arrive alive. I won't take public transport, public transit. Oscar Grant. I removed all air fresheners from the vehicle and double-checked my registration status. Dante Wright. And ensured my license plates were visible. Lieutenant Karen Mizario. I will be careful to follow all traffic rules. Belando Castillo. Signal every turn. Sandra Bland. Keep the radio volume low. Jordan Davis. And won't stop at a fast food chain for a meal. Richard Brooks. I'm too afraid to pray. Reverend Clemente C. Pickney. So I just hope the car won't break down. Corey Jones. When my wife picks him up at the end of the day, I'll remind her not to dance. Elijah McLean. Or stop to play in a park. Tamir Rice. Or patronize the local convenience store for snacks. Traylon Martin. Or walk around the neighborhood. Mike Brown. Once they are home, we won't stand in our backyard. Stephen Clark. Eat ice cream on the couch. Botten G. Or play any video games. Atatiana Jefferson. After my wife and I tuck him into bed around 7:30 p.m., neither of us will leave the house to go to Walmart. John Crawford. Or to the gym. Sharand Oats. Or on a jog. Ahmad Aubrey. We won't even walk to see the birds. Christian Cooper. Will just sit and try not to breathe. George Floyd. And not to sleep. Breonna Taylor. These are the things white people simply do not have to think about. God help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump shares.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
That's a hard one to follow. Thank you. I'm Jenny Blaker. I'm co-coordinator of the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations, CONGAS. At the end of April, as Loriann alluded to, 23 people signed a letter submitted to the council asking you to agendize an ordinance to prohibit the permitting and construction of any new gas stations in Katati. And I'm here tonight to reiterate that request and ask for any recommendations about next steps to move this forward. The city passed a climate emergency resolution in November 2019. If it's to mean anything, we must take action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as fast and as soon as possible. And we know that transportation accounts for a very large share of the county's greenhouse gas emissions because of the burning of fossil fuels for energy. It's also, this is also an environmental justice issue, not so much in Katati, but all over the world and all over the country. It is poorer people, people of color, people in indigenous communities who suffer because of the extraction of oil and gas, the pipelines, and the refineries, which are so incredibly polluting to air and water and soil and in the communities where those facilities are situated. In Katati, as Loriann said, there seem to be plenty of gas stations already. I don't know of any proposals to build any new ones. But a prohibition now would be a preemptive measure that would show solid support for enacting the goals of the climate emergency resolution. Permitting any new gas stations now will only prolong dependency on fossil fuel infrastructure into the future. Also, a prohibition now would save the city time, money, and energy should any applications come to Katati in the future. I know that we have several leaking underground storage tank sites in Katati already, including one gas station site that was abandoned. And I think has been in various stages of cleanup since something like 1989. So we don't need any new gas stations. And if you would be kind enough to put this on the agenda, a lot of people would really appreciate it and are hoping that you will do this soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker.
Carol, go ahead.
I'm Carol Williams. I'm a Katati resident. And I would like to support the statement that Jenny Blaker just made. I don't think that we need any more gas stations in Katati. And it would be appropriate to put an item on the agenda to consider how to carry that out. I'd also like to congratulate the city for some time ago installing an electric car charging station next to the city hall. It's used a lot. I live right in that neighborhood. And I see cars charging themselves there frequently. And maybe the city would consider looking for a site for a second one. I think it would be very widely used. So I look forward to seeing an item on the agenda to deal with reducing the number of gas stations in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mayor Moore, I just wanted to check in with one of our attendees tonight that I did receive the email from Vincenzo Carrazza.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrazza, if you can hear me, go ahead and speak.
Yes, radio check. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, fellow Americans. My name is Vincenzo Carrazza, a veteran from the local Veterans of Foreign Wars, Post 3237. And I am here to invite you to our upcoming VFW's Memorial Day event. As you know, Memorial Day is a holiday that honors the men and women who died while serving in the U.S. military. It is especially meaningful to us, the surviving combat veterans of foreign wars. And we'd like to share a little bit of military culture with our fellow Americans. The Memorial Day event is a flag lowering event with taps playing and names of our fallen service members being read. Anyone can submit the names, rank, service, and a short bio to be read along during the ceremony. It will take place at 7:00 a.m. Monday, May 31, at the Flagpole outside the Katati Veterans Memorial Building on 8505 Park Avenue. We will be in a PT formation, which is six to 10 feet away from each other, masked up, lasting for about 15 minutes. The ceremony is a somber outdoor event with little interaction. So the risk of COVID spreading is very low. So please come start off your Memorial Day by honoring the men and women who died in military service for our country. For more information, you can email us at Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Carrazza.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Mayor Moore? I will, it's probably just a good opportunity to jump in real quick and just briefly mention that with regard to the electrical vehicle charging, charging equipment, we do have the one by city hall. We do have a second one at the train station. Those are both city charging sites. And we are actively looking for another one in the downtown area. But still, that's still a ways out. So there is more on the horizon with regard to that. And with regard to the gas station item, we have a couple items that came up at the last council meeting under direction for future agenda items from council members. And one of them was that gas station ban. Ordinance is what it would be if we did that. And then the other is divestiture from Pers or letter requesting Pers divest from petroleum-related companies. I think primarily gas and fuel companies. So we have both of those items coming up, just for everyone's knowledge. We don't have a, I don't have a heart yet, but it will be coming.
Thank you, Mr. Robin, for the clarification on that. Next, we will move on to our consent calendar items. If there are no questions or no items need to be pulled on that, do we have a motion?
This is Councilmember Harvey. I move to approve the consent calendar.
This is Vice Mayor Landman. I'll second that.
This is Vice Mayor Landman. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, kindly do a roll call.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to direction on any future agenda items. Councilmember Sparks.
Yeah, I would like to request that we have a discussion about changing the start time for our city council meetings to 6:00 p.m. In my short time on the council, we've already gone almost to midnight on several occasions and looking around at the start times for other cities, we're the only one of the nine cities that starts as late as 7:00 p.m. with most of them starting at 6:00 p.m. So, I'm wondering if we can have a discussion about that. Thank you.
I think that would be great. I was going to suggest that myself in light of the later evenings that we've had and the inability actually to complete the agenda. So, I think that would be appropriate. Any other suggestions on the future agenda items? Perfect. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to our regular agenda and we will pick up first item 11C, consideration of a resolution authorizing a shared electric bike pilot program named Qatadi.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. This is J.P. Harris, senior planner with the city of Qatadi. And also thank you to the other council members. I will try to make this presentation brief and, Mayor, feel free to cut me off if you'd like to move on with the agenda. But it is, May is Bike Month and so we're happy to be bringing a bike item to the council. And this is the Marin-Sonoma Bike Share Pilot Program that has been, we've been developing with our partners at SCTA, which is the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, other cities along the Smart Rail as well as the Transportation Authority of Marin, which we call CAM for short. Next slide, please, Lauren. So, tonight, we're going to ask that you adopt a resolution that would authorize Bolt Mobility to operate shared e-bikes within the city of Qatadi. They would probably be utilizing public right-of-way for some of that activity. And this is as part of a three-year-long e-bike share pilot program. We're also asking, as a part of that resolution, that you authorize the city manager to execute a coordination agreement and sign all other permits and documents necessary to implement the e-bike share pilot program. And those documents would largely be the encroachment permits that would have to be issued to Bolt, for them to operate within the public right-of-way. Next slide, please. So, the Marin-Sonoma Bike Share Pilot Program is a regional program between Sonoma and Marin. It is funded by a grant from the MTC with SCTA and CAM as the two coordinating agencies. The idea is that there will be 300, at least 300, e-bikes and these are electric pedal-assist bikes deployed around Smart Stations and then key destinations around those stations. For example, what we're looking at in this area would include the Smart Station, probably one at the hub. Likely, you would see one over at Sonoma State. So, kind of more, kind of key areas. The other participating cities currently include essentially all the cities along the existing Smart Rail system, which is Santa Rosa, Roark Park, Qatadi, of course, Petaluma, Nevada, San Rafael, Larkspur, then Smart as well and the Golden Gate Transit. Additionally, there will be other entities that will likely be joining the program. They'll be operating under a different agreement, but those would be more private facilities or quasi-government like Sonoma State University or perhaps Sonoma Mountain Village. Next slide, please. So, the goals of the Bike Share Program are to support transit ridership by providing that first-last-mile option at Smart Stations and major hubs. So, if someone takes the train, there's an opportunity for them to get to downtown without walking a mile, for example, or vice versa, as well as getting along around within the community itself. It supports VMT and greenhouse gas reduction goals. It supports economic development. It will provide additional low-cost alternative transportation options for the public. And it supports reduced automobile dependency and promotes healthy lifestyle. Next slide, please. Some specifics, the operator would be Bolt Mobility LLC. They purchased, recently purchased another company called Gacha. So, some of the slides you see in here, you may see Gacha. They were an e-bike provider that was purchased by Bolt and they will be the provider. It will utilize basically stations. So, if you want to get a bike, they won't just be randomly dispersed throughout town. They will be located at either an actual physical station or kind of what you actually see in this picture, which is like a virtual parking hub, an area where the bikes will be made available. It's an app-based system, so you would be able to unlock. You need to have the app. You would be able to unlock with a smartphone or an RFID card. And it will be integrated into the Clipper Card system that you need to use to ride the Smart Train system. There's various pricing options. One is a pay-as-you-go, you know, a couple bucks to unlock and then so much for time after that. There's monthly subscriptions as well as reduced prices for students and veterans as well as a very good program, the Bolt Equity Program for lower-income individuals and households. It would provide a very much reduced option for pricing. And some of those figures are still being worked out today. Next slide, please. This is an example of what the bike looks like. It is a pedal-assist electric bike. Just, that's just what you'll see as these come onboard. And next slide. And this is an example of what the bike station might look like. This one holds five bikes. There's an information board as well as parking slots. And it's just something to highlight where it's at. Next slide, please. There has been some public outreach already. One of the things was a survey that went out through email newsletters and social media, essentially asking people where they would like to see the bike stations located. That survey was open for nearly a month, from February 23rd through March 19th. We received 489 individual survey submissions with 1,141 locations. Clearly, we're going to have to pare that down. Like I said, it's a 300-bike system. So, even if we just look at five bikes per, you know, that's about 60 different stations. Obviously, some are going to have more than five at the higher areas. But, you know, five is probably a good number for looking at Qatadi. And then, for example, when we looked at those locations, kind of right around Qatadi, the big things that we saw were the Smart Station, Downtown, Sonoma State, and Sonoma Mountain Village were kind of the highlighted areas where people wanted to see bike stations in this vicinity. Next slide, please. The coordination agreement that we're requesting you authorize the city manager to sign is included in the packet. It's a draft of coordination agreement at this time, but it has had a lot of work and review by city staff as well as city attorneys. The coordination agreement defines the roles and responsibility of participating agencies and those would be all the cities that are participating as well as the coordinating agencies, which are SCTA and CAM, the operator, which is Bolt in this case. And it provides the framework for the program coordination, the permitting requirements, the data sharing that would occur, bike parking, operations, maintenance, insurance, indemnification, and it's about, there's a lot, other items along those lines. Next slide, please. Some of the specifics is the pilot program costs are borne by SCTA and CAM through the MTC grant. It does establish a technical advisory working group to oversee the program development. The city would review and approve all station locations within the right-of-way. Once we sign this, once, if you authorize the city manager to sign this agreement, and he does, then Bolt can move into the next phase of this project, which is to identify, narrow down those, all the sites that people wanted to see and identify where precisely we want to put those in the city. And then we would review and approve those locations and that would be, probably be done through an encroachment permit process. The bikes will be parked in stations, so they are not to be just randomly left around town or outside of areas where they're not available to people. Bolt Mobility will operate a 24/7 customer service call center. So, they can respond to people as well as the city should any issues arise with the operation. And they will be regularly inspecting, maintaining, repairing the equipment, including refueling as well as making sure that the bikes, if they are abandoned somewhere outside of a station, they will pick up the bikes and relocate them to the station. As well, if there's a heavy loading at one station and they need to be distributed, they would distribute them through the various station locations to meet needs. And then part of that will be data that we gather as the system is used. We'll be able to more efficiently locate those bikes. Next slide, please. So, the next steps in this effort are to, first of all, execute the coordination agreement and then confirm the zones, narrow down, confirm the zones of interest for the hub locations and how the bicycles will be distributed. And then move into the site planning and the issuance of encroachment permits. And then Bolt will implement a marketing campaign and provide a program website and the app. And then we'll do the station install and deploy the e-bikes. And we're anticipating to do that later this year. And next slide. And with that, I'm available for any questions or to receive any comments as well. Dana Turey with the SCTA, who has done a lot of the heavy lifting on this program, is here and can help to answer any questions that you might have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and I'm glad we didn't have to cut you off. Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you said that the bikes are only to be left at the stations. What is preventing someone from just leaving it wherever it is that they're going in their last mile?
I'm going to actually ask Dana to help me answer that question. But my understanding is they'll be being charged well if the bike is not relocated to the station until the bike is then retrieved by Bolt and then returned to a station. That's my understanding and I don't know, Dana, if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just say that J.P. Harris, yes, you are correct in that. And there will also be a notification that would come up on the app if you have the app open saying that you're out of a parking hub. So, you would be notified and there would be a charge.
So, basically, it's penalty-driven?
I wouldn't say it's penalty-driven. Some people will be using the bikes to go someplace and there may not be a parking spot there. So, you'll be, you'll still be being charged. But then, let's just say if you abandon the bike, then yes, there is a penalty for that kind of act, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is my daughter lives in Spokane and they have, rather than the bikes, they have the scooters. And they're kind of, you know, you go wherever you want to go and then you just leave it. And they have actually people that at night come around and kind of collect them all and return them to their, you know, as you put it, their best spots for being utilized. I believe they call them juicers because they also make sure that they're charged. And that's my second question is that, do the stations where they're parked, does that recharge them? Or does the maintenance agreement, do they have to recharge them every day?
I believe Bolt will pick them up and charge them, is my understanding. The stations, as far as my understanding, are not charging stations, but, and some are actual virtual stations, so they're just an area. I don't know, Dana, if there are other types of stations that do the charging? You may want to also jump in here.
No, the stations won't have any power to them. The batteries are swappable, so basically, the operator will be able to see without being near the bike because they do have GPS connection. They'll be able to see if the batteries are low and where the bikes are with low batteries and they can go and swap out those batteries with fully charged batteries.
So, it sounds like someone is monitoring the whole network and they're looking for ones that may be running low on batteries and being proactive to go out and make sure that someone doesn't have one out and they run out of battery juice?
That is correct. And if there, you know, I believe that there is a way that they could actually make the bike not rentable if it's too low and they haven't gotten to it yet to swap out the battery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I think this is partially addressed already, but just to clarify, could somebody take, borrow one of these bikes, go to the grocery store, park it in a non-designated area, which is somewhere around there, go get their groceries and then go return the bike later? Or do they have to park it in a special spot when they park it?
No, they would be able to do just what you described there.
Thank you.
There is, just related to that, there is going to be a perimeter and I don't think we've established exactly where that is, where the bikes kind of have to remain. So, you wouldn't probably be able to take the bike outside of the network in a day. You would have to remain within this large kind of perimeter that runs along the train station, along the Smart Stations.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to begin by very quickly thanking J.P. as well as Dana Turey for being here and thank you for both for the presentation and Dana certainly for the months of work that you put on this at SCTA. I am very glad that you weren't cut off because I think this is a pretty important thing, frankly. I think this is an important attempt to at least start to begin to try and get a handle on that last-mile problem we've talked about for years, but we've never really made an incredible step towards dealing with it. And this certainly won't solve all of it. I can predict that easily. But it'll begin to see what it can do and it'll give us some answers to these. Certainly, it can hopefully reduce some GHs emissions, some vehicular, motor vehicular travel, which I think most of us here tonight certainly would like to see. So, I think it's pretty important stuff and I think we need to get to be finding solutions to some of these problems quicker because time's not on our side anymore. That's an obvious thing. So, I appreciate the presentation. We'll see where it goes. This is obviously designed to be a round-trust system. There's some things it may not be as effective at. It's perhaps a random drop system, but this is part of the process. We're going to have a few years to see how well this works and what sort of uptake we can get. So, very excited about it and wanted to thank you for being here.
Thank you. I don't see any other further council questions. My only question is, do we, or are there plans down the road to look at potential three-wheelers for those that may not have the agility for a two-wheel under ADA or anything like that?
I'm not aware of anything like that, Dana.
Yeah, so this is a question that we have asked and a very good question. The response that we've gotten from the company, the operator, is that there's not a great product out there that really fits the needs of anybody who might need something other than a two-wheeled bicycle that can handle, stand up to the elements the way that the Bike Share bikes do because they are outside all the time and used very frequently. You know, we would definitely be interested in hearing if people are particularly interested in adaptive bikes and see if we can partner with a bike shop that might be able to rent those types of bicycles to those people and see if we may be able to inter- and see if we may be able to integrate it into the program. But I think it would be a kind of by request, depending on what we hear from the communities.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that the city of Kattati will be held harmless on these agreements? Because I'm waiting for the first person to file the ADA lawsuit.
There isn't a demarcation clause if in the coordination agreement. The bike stations themselves will be accessible. You will be able to approach the bike stations. I think Dana has covered the three-wheel bike issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that up, because one of the things that occurred to me is that that last mile from the train station in Center Airport, I've taken the Smart Train up there before, but it is a mile walk, and it's kind of tough with pulling a suitcase along with that. So when you brought up the three-wheel bike, that might be an opportunity to be able to carry a piece of luggage, you know, with a basket, you know, a larger basket, and a little bit more stability. So that might be an opportunity to try something like that out up there. But thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions from the council. At this point, I will open it up for a public comment.
Eris Weaver, go ahead.
Hi, Eris with the Bike Coalition again. I would just like to encourage the council to approve this. I have been, I have used a Bike Share quite frequently in other areas when I'm traveling, although most of them have been more densely populated urban areas. And it is such a wonderful thing to be able to be somewhere and have a bike there. I am cautiously optimistic about this whole program here in Sonoma Marin Counties, just because I don't know if we really have the, both the population density and if 300 bikes is going to be enough. But we won't know until we do it, right? So many of the questions are just not answerable until, you know, here in our communities, until we actually have them here, how people are going to use them, where they're going to go. So let's do it. Let's approve it and see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Lori Alderman, go ahead.
I just wanted to talk about the west side. And that, all the interest is going to be downtown. And that's where the popular, where everybody, the bike people are downtown. But the people on the west side of the freeway, like from my house, it is three-fourths of a mile to the closest bus stop. And it's over a mile to go to the train station. So in our car dependency score is like, we're like 11 out of 100. And it seems that we should be able to, on the west side, in the more rural side, have at least a station out here, even though if it's not. But then you've got, you had the whole discussion about how it has to be within a network and all that kind of stuff, and that would expand the network so much. I'm just really confused whether you could even have a station out here on the west side because of how far, it doesn't have any retails or anything like that. But I do think it's something that needs to be considered, because we're like the transit. I mean, I'm not obviously going to be on bike. Paratransit can only come three-fourths of a mile from the nearest bus station, bus stop. And I'm at the end of Maple and West School of how even how paratransit will come. Never mind, you know, the people to, down on West School and Richardson, they don't even qualify for paratransit. So stuff needs to be done about the transit needs out here on the west side for us to be, join you guys downtown to get the buses and transit. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Moore, that will end the public comment.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council. Any further discussion on the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was going to say, if there's no further discussion, if you have to make a motion. I see a few hands. If I could just make a quick motion that if there's further discussion, I'll just leave it hanging out there, we can deal with it later. I'd like to move that we authorize Bolt Mobility, Bolt, the right to operate share electrical bicycles within the city of Kattati as part of a three-year-long Bike Share pilot program, Marin-Sonoma Bike Share program. And two, authorize the city manager or his designee to enter into coordination agreement with Bolt Mobility, SETA, TAM, and other participating cities in Sonoma and Marin Counties, and sign all other documents necessary to implement the program.
Mayor Moore, if I may interject, before we do receive a second on the motion, I do have a late hand in public comment, if you'd be willing to reopen.
I would. Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
Mr. Huko, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I don't believe this is in the right format or at the right place. I'm not familiar with all the nuances of Zoom. I've got my wife here and myself, and we're here to discuss some issues that are affecting us personally. We own two properties in town.
Mr. Huko, may I interrupt you? Assistant reference to the current issue we were talking about regarding a bicycle share program?
No, no, but I'm just trying to get on here to determine how to get onto the Zoom, so.
I will come, I will come back to you momentarily. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Sparks, you did have your hand up. Was there further discussion you wanted?
Yes, I just wanted to ask if we could have some clarification on that, on whether the west side would be outside of the zone where you're allowed to take the bicycles or not? Or if we know exactly how far that would be?
So very likely, the west side is within the zone. You would probably have to go several miles way west or east of Kattati before you would really be outside the zone. What I think is probably unlikely is that there would be a station on the west side. Because of, one, there is only 300 bikes that have to be spread between Larkspur and Santa Rosa. We don't, you know, we definitely have an input, but we can't demand where they go. There's a lot of metrics that go into determining where those bike stations will be. And I think as, as Eris mentioned, you know, one of our concerns is that the bikes actually get used, that we have, that we locate these stations in higher-density areas where we expect the bikes to be used. So I understand, I mean, there's a feasibility, or it's possible that we might see something maybe by the, kind of the more commercial area on the west side. But I, I, you know, I would say that the chances are probably pretty low for that to happen.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. I actually don't want a response to this, but I'm a little astounded that it took two and a half years from the award of the MTC grant to get to this point. And to Vice Mayor Landman's point that we don't have time to spare in addressing climate issues, that's a little frightening that it took two and a half years. And I was going to second the motion, but Councilmember Harvey, now has her hand up.
Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you. I would just like to tag along on to what Councilmember Sparks was saying about the west side. Ultimately, might there be consideration if it's something where children might be able to be engaged since the school is over there? Or is there an age limit, when they can't be used by anyone under a certain age? Anyways, that might be a consideration for the west side, if it's people going back and forth to school that, you know.
My understanding is that there is an age limit. And I believe it's at 18 and above.
Okay. Is that because of the electrification?
Dana, do you want to jump in here?
Yes, that is correct. It is only to be used by people 18 and over. And that's pretty typical of Bike Share programs.
Okay. Just a thought. But with that, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you kindly do a roll call on that?
Mr. Mayor, quickly, if I could, before we vote, I just wanted to say, it is indeed terrifying, and I agree with my friend how long it takes to get things done. However, if you take a look at this, this was getting towards the end of summer in 2018, almost the end of August before this even got started. So realistically, this began 2019. I think we'd all agree fairly, that 2020 was a black hole, it completely vanished. Hopefully, it'll vanish from our memories, given some time. But this is the price we pay when you're working with multiple counties in MTC, and frankly, millions of dollars eventually for something like this. You have to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. So it's a good place to be, so I hope you'll forgive my impatience about delaying it a little extra, even with all that time. So with that, on with the vote. Thank you.
Okay, before we call for the vote on this, are there any further comments or questions from the council? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Burgess, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you. Let the record show that that's a five.
Mayor Moore, you're muted.
Pardon me. Now we have unanimous on that, 5-0. Let the record show on that. Before we move on to line 11A, there was a member of the public who wanted to make a comment that misses citizens' business. I would open it up for just a moment and see if we could speak with that individual.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Yes, Emo Huko, go ahead.
Mr. Huko, you have.
Yeah, I'm muted. Pardon my lackability to operate through the Zoom. We are the Hukos. We own two properties in the city of Kattati. One, you may remember, we were renovating in 8150 La Plaza. I reported to you guys about January last year about the renovation project. I would say that we have made great progress. City has been helpful in many ways. However, we have been a year trying to get an encroachment permit through the city, and it's been a challenge, to say the least. And our first application for the encroachment was January last year. And yesterday, I resubmitted and paid another fee for the second encroachment application. And I'm hopeful that this one will be more ex-suitable to the city, and we can get on with the business. So while that has been ongoing for some time, I want to report on another incident that has been a grievous injustice to us that we see it. We have an investment property, a 395 East Kattati, that we've used as a rental for a number of years, and this doesn't be future renovated also. Long story short, we leased, one year leased to a family in need of housing, supported by a pastor in our local community. Property was inspected by COTS, and we, go ahead, and rented to them. Shortly thereafter, red flags happened, and they turned it into a homeless encampment. During that period of time, we were getting notices from the city that were early as October, and we were given violation notices. And we attended a hearing that I thought was informational, and it turns out it was a prosecution trial and jury. And penalties were issued at $41,000, which I appealed. And as of today, I got a notice that untimely request is denied, and we have $41,000, and counting, or $42,000 to pay to the city, what appears to be a profit center. And we are just, I'm 81, my wife's 74, we're in the, don't have the resources to do this, and we're asking the city to review what's been going on and appeal the action that the city has taken on us. And we'd like an audit on what's going on. We just feel that we have mental and physical stresses. And I have had a, an attack.
A mini-stroke.
A mini-stroke. My wife's got chronic dills. And the city's behavior is just as incomprehensible in these kind of corroded times.
Thank you, Mr. Huko. I will follow up with you offline with the city manager and the planning department, and we'll be in touch with you in the next day or two.
I appreciate it greatly.
That would be great.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye-bye. Thank you. Pardon my indulgence there. And we will move on to 11A, I believe it was.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have Ben Adam Klimmer here with Crisis to do a presentation about Kahootz. Before Lauren loads that up and you start the presentation, I also just wanted to give you, in addition to what's in the SAF report, just a brief update on what's going on with the process. And that's the data from the CAD systems has all been exported and sent to Ben. So that process is now starting, sort of analyzing the data and moving through that step. So with that, I would hand it off to Ben.
Thank you, Damian. I really appreciate it. And thank you for giving me your time tonight. I really appreciate it as well. You may hear the sounds of two young boys wrestling and gossling each other in the background. Hopefully, it's not too distracting. But I do have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, and they babysittered, decided to bake cake with them today, and they are a little bit wily. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And everyone can see that pretty well? Yep, awesome.
Yes.
So my name is Ben Adam Klimmer, and I worked for, up in Eugene, Oregon, and Springfield, Oregon, for approximately five years with the Kahootz team. I'm sure some of you have been hearing about this model and this team and what it's like. And I worked as both a crisis intervention worker and as an EMT for them, and also as a part-time administrator as well. I moved back down to Southern California, where my wife is from, a few years ago, to do graduate school with her, and started helping out with some consulting with cities who were interested in learning about the Kahootz program. And that's now evolved into my full-time work. And so now I work as a consultant with, as my own employer. And I've got a contract with the city of Petaluma, and I've got a contract with Rother Park. And also, I'm working in the cities of Huntington Beach and Garden Grove in Orange County. And I live in Pasadena. So I mostly do work with California cities. So I was really grateful to be able to be brought here to talk about the model and the program that I just, I love so much. I think it's the most wonderful program that ever was created. I believe in it very strongly, and I love and very proud of every moment that I worked on. So crisis assistance, helping out on the streets, or? So crisis assistance, helping out on the streets, or Kahoots? I'd say here, it's a new model for first response, but in reality, the team has been around for almost 32 years. July 4th of this year will be 32 years. And what you see here in this image is a really typical Kahoots response. Probably somebody called to have someone check on this person who's sleeping under a blanket, this person uses a wheelchair for mobility. And this Kahoots team here, which is this young man is named Christian, and this woman is Ashley. Christian's an EMT, Ashley's a crisis counselor, and they're just going out to check on this person, see, you know, are they okay? Do they need some food? Do they need some warm socks or a hat? What is it that they need right now, and will the Kahoots team be able to get it for them? Do they need transport to a shelter or sobering center or hospital? Are they sick? All these kinds of things, just checking on them, making sure everything's going okay. So I think that there's a ton of questions, you know, what is Kahoots and what is the model exactly? I say in a nutshell, it's a non-emergency first response to residents who are experiencing mental health, substance use, and homelessness-related crises. And I think that crisis response, meat of that, often gets a little bit missed when people are talking about it. It's really, that's its focus, is crisis response. So if your crisis is deriving from any one of those kinds of three things, mental health, substance, or homelessness, this would be the team that would go out, that'd talk with you. This guy here, Matt, he's actually the nicest guy ever. I know he looks really dark and brooding there in that picture, but he's actually super sweet. Here's one of the original Kahoots vans there. It started in 1989. Like I said, originally, it was just 12 hours a day, and then it kind of expanded over many years. One question that always comes up is, you know, how is it funded? It is funded entirely by the city of Eugene, the county of Lane County, and the city of Springfield. And then another question that comes up always is, you know, is it safe? And we have a, the Kahoots team has an extremely solid track record. No Kahoots worker has ever been hurt on the job. Never stabbed, never got, never injured by a patient or another person in 32 years. Hundreds of thousands of calls that they've responded to, so I feel pretty good about that. But just a little bit about the process. It's a different type of response. It really alleviates the burden that I think we've placed as a society on police departments and fire departments and EMS systems, that's emergency medical services, who manage crises that derive from emotional distress, substance use, and homelessness. That, because it alleviates that burden, it really optimizes the time of those other emergency responses and creates a sort of fourth arm of the first response system. One that I think we, a lot of people agree is sort of missing, something to respond to these types of issues specifically. So how does it work? As you saw in that first slide, it works in teams of two: a crisis counselor, a crisis intervention worker, and an EMT. The crisis counselor does a lot of things, they were many names, including family mediations, just general de-escalation, social work intervention, referrals, suicide assessment, and so on. And then the EMT is there, and I think that in terms of crisis response team, the EMT is what really sets this model apart. Really is what makes it unique. The EMT is able to sort of rule out physical health or issues that might be presenting themselves as mental health issues. So for example, somebody who's hypoglycemic and they're diabetic, they can often seem kind of intoxicated. And the EMT allows us to say, no, no, this person's not chronic, they have a blood degree of fifty. Also, if somebody has a, maybe someone who's elderly, especially when they get urinary tract infections, they can seem almost psychotic, they can start to have hallucinations and things like that. EMT can give us a set of vital things. No, actually, this person's not just having hallucinations, they may have an addiction. Really great things like that. They also take the lead on situations that may turn into emergency situations while we wait for the higher level of care to arrive. Training does last a pretty significant amount of time, and the teams are always very skilled and very able to do a lot of different things. Here's another team here. I really like this photo. That man in there, Manny, he's my long-term partner on the van. I've been on over a few thousand calls with him, and he's an EMT, and he's doing wound care for somebody. Because in Eugene, Springfield is very wet. People who live on the street get wounds rather frequently. And what, you know, what would cost just several dollars of wound care can turn into an amputation if it's not treated quickly and cost the city and the ambulances and the hospitals, a lot of them have them. So Kahoots is also addressing that. So the other thing that really sets this model apart, makes it very unique compared to a lot of other crisis models, is that you do access it the exact same way that you access police and the fire department, through the non-emergency or the 911 numbers. Call takers take the calls, dispatchers, you know, then look at those calls and send the teams out accordingly. This is actually the dispatch center where police, fire, and Kahoots are all dispatched in Eugene. The common type of call that the Kahoots model really addresses is what we call the simple welfare check. This is a really good picture here of a good friend of mine, Brenton, and his van partner just checking on somebody, probably sleeping next to that, you know, in that space between the building and the wood there. They're just making sure that person's okay. So, you know, is somebody not returning phone calls, is somebody sleeping in the park, someone you know making sort of like vague suicidal, or maybe even a death update via text, social media? You got neighbors with their males building up, and you haven't seen them in a couple of days, you want somebody to go check on them? Or just, you know, generally like somebody who's screaming at no one on the corner, and you're not really sure what their deal is, and you want somebody to go check on them. Perfect time call for the Kahoots team. We're actually developing this team, I stay in Petaluma, and we're going to call it the Safe Team. So if you're ever down that way in the next few months, you could call the Safe Team if any of those things come up as well. Who receives services? Everyone receives services. This is very much a service that's based on, you know, responding to the entire community, not just like a subset of the population. So not just people who are experiencing homelessness, or not just people who are having mental health issues. The same way that the police and the fire department respond to any and all people within your community, this team will also do that. So people experiencing mental health issues, psychosis, mania, family members in dispute, just minor medical issues that really aren't, that are causing a crisis, but maybe not an emergency. People who've sort of fallen out of touch with loved ones, people living in shelters, group homes, board and cares, nursing facilities, on and on, all those things. And what is it, you know, when the team is responding to these folks, you know, what is it that they're doing exactly when they get there? And I think the most common type of interventions are just general crisis de-escalation and medical evaluations. But also, one of the major pieces of this model is that, you know, it's not just like, oh, hey, you know, you need this service, here's the phone number, you should call it and go see. It's a, hey, we're going to call that phone number together, and if there's room available for you, or if there's an ability to do an intake with wherever we're going, then we're going to put, we're going to take you in the van. We'll take you right there. We'll drive you there, and we can actually get you in to that service right now, rather than waiting for the patient to make the call. Also, a lot of conflict mediation, wellness checks, like I said, welfare checks, and also providing food to folks who are food insecure. The Eugene Police Department, which, you know, we, the Kahoots team has a really solid relationship with, as well as the Springfield Police Department, is estimating that Kahoots is diverting somewhere between eight and 10% of their total calls, based on the numbers that I've assessed for Petaluma. We're looking at a very similar number. In 2019, of the 20,000 calls or so that the Kahoots team went on, only 24 of those resulted in police response with lights and sirens. Would say that the situation went so bad that they needed police response for assistance because the patients were being violent, something like that. And then most of the time, you know, sometimes police arrive on the team, and they say, you know, this is really not our call. And then they call the Kahoots team in, and that's much more common than the other. One of the primary, sort of, I think one of the most important parts of the Kahoots model is responding to people who are experiencing suicidal feelings, suicidal thoughts, and also making suicidal actions. Some of those can be involving weapons, and some of those do involve the police response with the Kahoots team, but the vast majority of them do not. Again, also, the majority of those calls do not end in hospital visits. And so the Kahoots team is really capable of taking those calls that from time to time end up in hospitalizations and making sure that they can resolve those on theme, rather than, you know, the person having to go and do an ambulance ride or a police ride to the hospital. Some of those calls also involve EMS, but very, very few of them do. And about 7% of calls, Kahoots calls are suicidal ideation of some kind, but those are the top priority calls. So for everyone who's interested a little bit in sort of like the cost savings that comes to communities for this, this, I think this is an important piece, is that the Kahoots team, by sort of diverting emergency visit, emergency room visits, and often sometimes ambulance rides as well, the team has been able to save approximately $8.5 million per year in that area through the local fire, EMS, Medicaid, and hospital system. And this is a nice little photo, I think, here of what the back of the van looks like. You can see it's got these kind of hard seats, and there's a plexiglass barrier that's reinforced, that separates the patient compartment from the cab. There's Brenton again. Brenton, that guy that assists in that picture before, has been on the team since 2008. So anytime you look for pictures of Kahoots, you always find him. So Eugene-Springfield is about 230,000 people. Put Roanoke Park and Katati together, Springfield is still quite a bit bigger than the two cities. But you can see in the city of Springfield in 2019, which is roughly the size of Petaluma, they responded to 6,500 calls. By comparison, the mobile crisis team in the city of LA, Los Angeles, a city of 4 million people, their crisis team responded to 7,500 calls in 2019, and that was with 17 units. So this is a very efficient and very effective model that is very agile and can respond to a whole slew of different types of things. This woman here is the current director of Kahoots. Her name is Ebony. She's been rocking. You may have seen her on CNN and the likes. So what I just referred to in terms of the LA team, that's what we refer to as the co-response model. And co-response is quite a bit, is a little bit different. It's the most common type of mobile crisis that there is out there. The Kahoots model is different in the sense that it doesn't use involuntary hold, and it also does have that medical component. It's paper, and it's just kind of more flexible in general, a little more agile, as a friend of mine likes to say. Here's a good example of what a co-response sort of response looks like when there's some kind of medical involved. This is out of the city of West Hollywood. There's this 55-year-old man, he's homeless, first time ever. And the sheriff makes contact with him and then calls the co-response team, and then calls the medics as well. So in a situation like this, you've got, you know, something to the tune of an officer, the co-response team, which is another officer, and a clinician, and then your medics, which turns to about eight or nine people total to respond to this one man. And with the Kahoots model, what you get in this situation is you get a few people able to handle all aspects of this call, from the first response to the mental evaluation, to the physical health evaluation, to the transport, which is just a very, you know, smooth and efficient way to manage these types of calls, also more affordable way to manage these type of calls as well. And, you know, based on how LA sheriffs sort of assesses this cost of call, somewhere between $23,900. But Kahoots model can do it significantly less. And finally, I think that one of the key points of, I think, what makes the model so also innovative is it's very similar to what we might think of as like a paramedicine model. We don't send out emergency room doctors on every ambulance call. And similarly, this model doesn't send out, you know, psychiatrists or sort of like licensed clinicians on every single call, but rather, it sends out very well-trained, para-clinical folks who can, you know, listen to you, triage that call and say, you know, I think that you would do well to see a therapist and kind of work through what you've got going on in a long-term setting. Or I think that you could do well on, you know, to see a psychiatrist and work through that kind of stuff, or a primary care doctor or whatever. So it's more akin to the paramedicine model than anything else, but it's basically paramedicine for mental health and substance use. And that's really where the really meat of the model really lives, is in that, that ability to do that triage, make that contact, build that rapport, and really, you know, pass that person on to the ongoing care and refer them to what they really, really need for ongoing stuff. So again, thank you so much. I think there's plenty of room for questions, and I'd love to hear all your questions and answer whatever you got for me.
Thank you, Mr. Klimmer. You have any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Landman?
I'm shocked. I took my time, and I thought there would be a forest of hands with this. Just a basic simple question. Ben, thank you for this very interesting. I love it when we have an interest, a topic in town, a concern, and as the deeper and deeper we get into it, the better it looks, because that is not usually the way things go, but this is all very good data. I wanted to ask you a little bit about training. You mentioned there's fairly intense training, which I could understand. In particular, you mentioned that the medical response of the team is EMT training, emergency medical technician. And I wonder if you could speak to that. Is this something above the typical junior college course level of EMT that I remember? Obviously, the years since I trained as an EMT or was involved with EMT training, it's been a while. I think we may have used rocks and sticks to take blood pressures then. But what you're talking about, some of the level of experience to make an assessment of level of consciousness changes related potentially to a UTI, that talks me to somebody that's had some time in the field or some specialized training. So I'd like to hear a little about that, because I think it sounds like a good thing.
Yeah, and I mean, I think as you know, and I know that right, EMTs are not able to diagnose illnesses, but in the, you know, situation of something like a UTI, and I've been on multiple different calls where we've been out with somebody who had a UTI. You know, it always originated as this kind of, you know, well, my grandpa, or my mom, or my dad, they're having these weird experiences that I've never seen before, you know, and they've never behaved like this. Or maybe they have been behaving like that a little bit in the past, but it's like very, very elevated right now. And it really, between the crisis worker who's saying like, this seems like something more than just sort of like some, you know, late-developing mental health issue, and the EMT taking their vitals and going, yeah, and they've got like 101-degree fever and all that kind of stuff, then this, there's suddenly a realization of, oh, you know, maybe this person really needs to go to the hospital. And then once that decision is made and the transport is accomplished, either by the team, based on, you know, if the person's vitals are stable enough, or if they need to go with EMS because their vitals are too high, which the EMT makes that decision, then you can send them off. The EMTs are, the only required, they have an EMT basic training. And some of the folks on the team are RNs, some of the folks on the team who are paramedics, so with much higher certification. But by and large, we only require EMTs. Reason for that is just largely because we need somebody there who can say, okay, this person's vitals, and the way that they're acting are pretty stable, or we need somebody there who can go, well, they're acting a little erratic, and based on- or we need somebody that, that can go, well, they're acting a little erratic, and based on their vitals, we really need EMS. If you don't have the EMT there, you can't make that assumption, you can't make that decision, you can't make those vitals assessments. And so they really provide us a lot of ability to, to sort of go down more the EMS route or go more down the, you know, this is a person who's just having some sort of like substance induced or, or just a organic mental health issue. I don't know if that answered all of your questions, but.
So, I, I think I got a lot, but let me just follow up quickly. So for your employees, Ben, or for cahoots employees, at the various systems, wherever they may be, when you hire them, is there some short in-service or training that goes above that basic?
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm getting the sense, yeah, that's what I was getting at, I'm getting the feeling here, looking at 30 years of cahoots experience, there's an interesting niche here of a slight variance to EMT where there's some additional knowledge base that I think is somewhat unique. And I just kind of wanted to hear if that's part of the curriculum, from what you're telling me, it sounds like it is.
Oh, big time.
With that, I can surely see this being workable.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna do the best that we can to give the most training that we possibly are capable of doing for the teams that are coming to Sonoma County. And also, you know, the, the, the cahoots EMTs go through somewhere between 400 and 500 hours of field training before they're cut loose to be on their own and be the lead EMT on a team. In addition to at least a week or so long of just kind of general class training that will orient them to those types of things they're gonna see on cahoots.
So they have an internship essentially?
Yeah, it's a paid internship.
Or probationary period?
They have, well, it's a, it's a trainee, it's a trainee, it's a trainee period, and then a, you have, you, there's a, there are multiple periods. It's a trainee period, a provisionally trained probation period, so it's, it's an extensive process.
Good, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, I was wondering, could share with us a little bit about the cost sharing structure? You mentioned that the cahoots in Oregon, it's a combination between Eugene Springfield and the county. So how does that cost sharing work? Because having the county in there is a significant amount of funds.
Yeah, so, so the city of Eugene has always, and I guess they're, they're, they're technically, they're two different programs, right? There's Eugene program and the Springfield program, they're both run by the same nonprofit, all the same employees work on both, basically. And, and so the city of Eugene has and always has and continues to fund, you know, the, the city of Eugene program completely out of their own budget. And approximately six years ago, the, the county of Layne County received a grant to do mobile crisis services. And, and they, they awarded that grant to, to Whitebird to do cahoots in Springfield. So for the first five years of its existence, it was funded entirely by the county. Then, as that funding has dried up, the city of Springfield has taken over some of it and will continue to take over more and more of it, although probably not always, they probably won't ever take over all of it. Springfield is the second largest city in the county, it's actually quite similar to how Santa Rosa is the largest city in your county, Eugene is the largest city there, and then Petaluma, Springfield are probably the second, second biggest. Though, though, you know, that's, that's kind of how that works there. And, and to some extent, the county funding does supplement the Eugene funding a little bit, but, but not really.
So the county really, except for this minor funding and getting Springfield started, is not really participating?
They, they, they were for the first five years and their, their role has slowly diminished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, I'm so excited to have you here, and Ben, I just wanted to thank you for coming and, and talking with us. And I have several questions, actually three questions. First of all, I know that, that we've shared our CAD data with you, and I just wanted to kind of get a sense for you so I and some of the people in the audience tonight understand where we're go, where we're headed now. What is it that you're going to be looking for in that data, and what kinds of questions are you going to be answering for with that data? So that's question one. Question two, with the SAFE program in Petaluma, the pilot that's running there, what organization is actually administering the program and running it? And, and would it look the same for the Roanoke Park-Cattati area, or what sort of way of managing mystery envisioning? And then three, if you had a crystal ball, I know we're very early, but I'm just really curious, what would it look like to you in terms of how many, if we were to do a South Sonoma County partnership where Petaluma or Park, maybe whoever else wants to be involved are working together? What would that look like in terms of how many vans we would need and where they would make place and things like that?
Well, so, okay, so let's start with the first question. So I, I actually was just looking at it, it looks like of the approximately 4,500 calls that I was given, sort of, the, the list of approximately 650 of them for 2019 and, and then also about, you know, same amount for 2020 are from Cattati. So, and that's between the departments of Cattati Police and Roanoke Park and Sonoma State. And, and what we're gonna be looking at is going through, and then I've, I've taken the 4,500 calls or so that, that exists in that, that spreadsheet, randomized them, and then I've taken the top 250 of that randomized list and both of 2019 and 2020, and then I'm going to be looking at the call data or the call chronology. So what, you know, what, what started the call and sort of what happened on it and then what ended it. And just kind of give a sense of like, okay, this, based on the call information at the beginning, this would definitely be a, a mobile crisis call. Or if it's something like, for example, you know, so, so maybe a substance use issue, right? Maybe somebody's intoxicated and they're walking down the street and they're having trouble staying. That would be a cahoots style call. However, if somebody's driving their car and they're intoxicated and they're swerving all over the road, that is also a substance use issue, right? But that would still go to the police. So we'll be looking at those kinds of things and sort of, you know, breaking them down and, and putting them into four categories. One is, this is a definitely 100% a mobile crisis call. One is, this would probably be a call based on some of the information that would go to maybe both the police and cahoots. And then on scene, there would be some, some work on deciding kind of like who would, you know, who would do what on that call. Usually on those types of calls, the police are just there to sort of make sure that nobody's carrying a weapon or threatening anyone, and then the, the cahoots team will enter and do the rest of the call, the police will leave. Those are what I call co-response, although it's a little bit different than, than normal co-response, which is, you know, which is police and, and the social worker all the way through the whole call. Then there's something, then there's gonna be like a, a category to the call possible diversion, which means maybe it could be diverted into the, to the mobile crisis team, but I just don't really know about enough information about it. And then there's just be no response, right? This would not involve a mobile crisis team, so like, maybe like a drunk driver. So, so then, yeah, the, the second question is, oh, if Petaluma People's Services, they're going to be, they're gonna be managing the team in the city of Petaluma. And I think that in terms of, you know, I always recommend something to the tune of you need one 24-hour van for every about 100,000 people. Between the sort of, if we, if we consider Roanoke Park-Cattati and Petaluma all, you know, one sort of 101 corridor South County group, that, that puts us right around, I think, 110,000 or so, with some outlying unincorporated folks in that area that, that may end up being in the purview of this, of these types of teams. But because of the, the physical distance and we're, you know, we're looking at something a little bit different, if, if, now you're gonna, I, I'm gonna get, I may get my, I'm gonna be stepping in something here, but I'll just, if you want my crystal ball and how I kind of like, or my wickfulness to have it go, I think it'd be very cool to, and maybe very efficient, I guess, and cost-effective. You, you have a, 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 a primary van for your day shifts up in, up in sort of Roanoke Park-Cattati, your primary van for your day shifts in Petaluma, and then your overnight, the two, the whole, all three cities with your team. Based on the call data that we've looked at, that actually makes a little bit of sense between the hours of about 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM. There's about nine calls per day that would be going to a team like this in those two areas. And then once you get to 11:00 PM to 11:00 AM, that, that brought significantly down to about four in each group, in each, each area, which means you have actually about eight to nine combined in the whole area, which means every 12 hours, you've got about eight to nine calls. That's a pretty decent, eight to nine calls every, every 12 hours is pretty good. We also expect that with the creation of a team like this, there's going to be people calling just for the team, so calls that aren't currently existing. So we do expect those call, that call line to go up a little bit, and that's what we've seen in Eugene and Springfield as well. In addition to the calls that we kind of divert from traditional first responders, there's also calls that are added just because the team doesn't exist. So, so, you know, that would be a really neat way to collaborate and just create an efficient system. But, you know, that's, that's, we gotta work on, on, on all the details and the, the interactions with everyone to sort of see that, the possibility.
Thank you for, for answering the questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, I'd like to ask a follow-on question on that. Considering, you know, that size that you talked about, that it would make sense for Cattati, Roanoke Park and Petaluma, and it sounds like a little bit of unincorporated, how does that work when they're all different agencies? Add on top of that, there are different fire departments, add on top of that, there's different police and the sheriff involved. I mean, how does, I mean, it's sort of gets complicated, and your nice little picture in Springfield and Eugene, it's all controlled by one city and everybody works for that one.
Actually, well, it sort of is, it's sort of not actually, but, but it's, it's a little more, it's actually, it's kind of complicated Eugene and Springfield because Eugene has their own dispatch, and they dispatch their team in Eugene, and Springfield has their own dispatch, and they dispatch their team in Springfield. And there's not a lot of great communication between the two, so sometimes that can be a little bit tricky. And, and I think that, that the lessons that we've learned between Eugene and Springfield are, are lessons that I definitely want to bring to the development of the programs here, which is that sort of making sure that we, we establish really nice lines of communication, be really clear around, you know, where teams can go and who's going where and when, and making sure that all of that, that is neatly streamlined.
Okay, because that, I mean, that is a little complicated, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I fully agree with you. And, and, you know, the nice, you know, the nice thing is, is that, is that law enforcement also broadly has interoperability on their radios so that they can all talk to each other on the radio as well. And so we would, we would want to be, you know, utilizing that ability to its fullest extent.
Yeah, I, and this is probably a question for the chief. Are we interoperable with the sheriff's department too? I, I can't remember whether, when we changed all that stuff, did we have interoperable communications?
I'm not aware, yeah.
Yeah.
But the chief is on, he would know that.
Yeah, I'm on, Councilmember Harvey, yes, we have interoperability with all agencies. Our portable radios are dual-band, we can talk to fire and law. In addition to that, Cattati, Roanoke Park, the sheriff's office in Petaluma, we're in that shared CAD RMS. And along with that is Redcom, which is fire, and so we can all see each other virtually in, in CAD RMS where we're all at and what we're doing. So I'm confident that this will work. And Ben is spot on, 11:00 in the morning to, to 11:00 at night, for the past 10 years that I've been chief countywide, that is our, that's our busiest times for fire and law.
Thank you, it sounds like we do have some things going for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I'm, I'm thrilled to be having this conversation, thrilled that you're here. I actually lived in Eugene in 1989 when the program started, though, I did not wear it at that time. I had kind of a, sort of a meta-question about transferability, like, are there either legal issues that are different in California versus Oregon that, that change what kinds of calls a cahoots type team can respond to versus what kind of calls have to have emergency services? And/or are there particular sort of cultural attributes that Eugene Springfield has that are necessary to the successful functioning of a cahoots type model and that you look for in other places when you're looking for whether it's gonna work there?
Yeah, those are, those are great questions. And so to the, to the, the best of my knowledge, as far as I've gone about, you know, fumbling through, trying to figure out the laws and the legal barriers to this kind of stuff, I, I don't see anything really preventing a team like this operating pretty similarly, or at least very, very, or, you know, maybe even identically to, to the cahoots model. You know, I used to work at the, at the homeless outreach worker in, in Hollywood, California, and, I mean, it was pretty common for people to just call the police and say, oh, can you come, come check on this person? And the police would just call the homeless outreach team and say, hey, can you go check on them? You know, and so, so that was a, a common occurrence, and, and nobody blinked an eye, and we'd put them in our vans and drive them away, you know, and, and nobody blinked an eye. So I, I think that generally, I, I think that there's pretty strong precedent in terms of other teams that are not quite the same, but, you know, but have similar attributes that have been functioning for a very long time, you know, over 10 years, because that was, that was almost 10 years ago that I was doing that. Though, you know, so there's, there's certainly places that, that can be managed and certainly. And then I, I, I like your question, and I would say I'm, I'm quite the optimist personally. And, and I also, just before you, I, I really liked your name, by the way, as well. And I, I think that, you know, my, my vision of the, of the country, if we were really getting my crystal ball, by the way, you know, my vision of the country is that in, you know, 10 years, it's going to be as, as normal to call for a cahoot-style mobile crisis or some kind of mobile crisis, you know, for something, as it is to call for the police, the fire department or EMS in every city in the country. And so the question of like, you know, to, to sort of respond to your question of like, do we look for certain attributes in the community? Sure, it really is helpful when you've got a supportive chief, and you've got a supportive council, and you've got a supportive city manager, and you've got all those kinds of things, I mean, man, that makes it way smoother. But, but the reality is, I think that this is coming, it's going to be everywhere. There's, there's really no getting around it, in my opinion, because people know that we need it and it's, and we're pushing for it, and the time is right. So I think that we'll do it pretty much anywhere. I'll, I'll, I'll do it anywhere, I want to see it everywhere.
Great, thanks.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Sorry about that, good discussion, brings out, wanted to take second bites at the apple, apologies, my friends. First of all, I like that safe team designator, and I fully agree. The long-term goal, I've always thought, I hear Councilmember Sparks see it, I know I've heard from staff in, in the report, this should be regionalized, I originally saw us partnering with Petaluma, now that Roanoke Park's evidenced interest, I want to see all three of us ideally partner to do this. I see a lot of advantages in cross-staffing training and certainly with mutual aid. And also logically, if we're doing that and supporting some areas of the unincorporated area, then that really, not only is logical and efficient, but it makes the case for county funding to some degree when this hopefully becomes an ongoing thing, because I think it'll need that for safety. What I wanted to ask you about, Ben, there actually is a question hold in all of this. What I wanted to ask you about, Ben, there actually is a question hold in all of this. Uh, when we're talking about governance, how to make this work. Uh, you, clearly you've run into multiple cities or counties, maybe part of another county or cities spread around doing this together. How often do you run into them using a JPA as a model to do this? Cause it strikes me that joint powers agreement is the perfect device potentially if three cities wanna do this. It allows you to point a draft, a joint powers agreement where you can settle concerns like dispatch and guidelines, everything else like my colleague, Councilmember Ford, mentioned. Uh, and at the same time, uh, it provides a way to work together. It also provides strong legal protections for the individual participants separating that JPA as an entity from the individual cities. In short, it goes back a hundred years and it's a good thing. Have you seen that used in other places?
I haven't, but, uh, I, I can say, uh, you know, that in Orange County where I'm also helping out, that's gonna, that could be a really critical piece because a bunch of cities are raising their hands saying, we would like this. I think Sonoma County is a, a great place or a bunch of cities are raising their hands and saying they would like it. And I just had a conversation with Confer Costa County folks today, um, where that might be, um, really useful there as well. So, yeah, it's a.
I would, I would encourage that strongly, that especially in a situation like this, uh, when everybody's interested, the next question that comes up, something that can become a big stumbling block. When you have different and sometimes disparate agencies involved or localities, is who controls it, how do we run it? Um, and you need to have a way for everyone to come to the table, have a way of sharing the joint powers agreement that everyone can agree to. I think the best example of it to my mind was the run-up to Sonoma Clean Power about eight, nine years ago now in this county. Um, because the problems were certainly exacerbated there, much more potential cities and, and the cities in the county, how do we all work together? That's not something that always works well. The JPA model worked really good for us. So I, I won't belabor that further, I just wanted to see if there was ever evidence of that. But I would strongly suggest that because that would lead us prob, perhaps quicker into regionalization. And I think, I know I'd be much more comfortable working that way with our, our sister and brother cities around us. And I'm sure they would be much more comfortable working that way potentially too. Thank you for that, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you. And then last but not least, Ben, I had a couple of questions for you, or I should say Mr. Clymer, not the other Ben. Um, how many programs of this nature are you currently running?
I'm, I'm helping develop, uh, um, five, five of them and, um, and I'm trying, or no, six, six, six. And then, uh, this shows you where I'm at here. Um, and then I've got, uh, a couple more that I'm, I'm hoping to, to start, uh, working on as well in the next few months. Um, and then some of those projects are, are pretty little and some of them are very large, like the Orange County project, which may end up being, you know, a lot of cities, so we'll see.
And with your particular program, I'm assuming you have a board of directors and multiple staff in addition to the field people?
Uh, I don't personally. Not at the moment. Um, so, you know, uh, that, that's gonna be coming, uh, but, uh, my, my whole operation is, is, is very small and, and is still taking off. Um, it's, you know, I've only been, I started consulting last year in the, about July. And, uh, and then I moved to being full-time doing it, um, in late January, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. And then my last question is, um, everything's on a contract, so it's under a flat fee, uh, based on the participants, et cetera?
Are you thinking that, uh, what, when, how I get paid or are you talking about like, um, for, for mobile crisis team?
Mobile crisis team.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we, you know, it's, uh, no, no citizen has to pay for the service.
It's all contract-based.
Yeah, so the, there's a, it's a Whitebird clinic has a contract with the city of Eugene and then the county of Plain County and the city of Springfield. Um, with, uh, the safe program in Petaluma, Petaluma People's Services has a contract with the city.
So in any of those programs, are any of those individuals actual employees of the city or county? Or are they all part of the nonprofits out there?
No, those, those programs are all through nonprofits. Um, the, the, for example, the mobile crisis team that was just kind of developed in San Francisco, um, that's being run through their fire department, so they are, uh, city employees through the fire department, the fire department employees. Um, the city of Portland is doing something similar. Um, so there are some examples of city employees, uh, but, uh, and I think actually Santa Rosa, they're, uh, the paramedic on that team is going to be a city employee. So it's, um, a couple of, you know, there's, there's examples of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, so with that, you know, I don't see any further questions from the council. I will open it up for public comment at this time. Ms. Burgess, if you would be so kind.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And looking for public comment from our attendees, Adrienne Lobby, go ahead.
I seem to always get called on first, I don't know what this is, but I, I'm really happy tonight to be excited about something that, that you all are doing in the, the staff report. And watching Ben, it's just been really encouraging. Um, I'm gonna, if you'll indulge me, I wanna talk about an old friend of mine. Um, I also lived in Eugene for a while and I had this wonderful friend named Charlotte Reese. And, um, she's passed on since then. But she was the director of the Whitebird Free Clinic, um, back in the day, probably long before Ben was there. Uh, at the time, I think Whitebird was transitioning from being a free clinic to being more of a 501(c)(3). And I think she was the first, uh, director. Anyway, she, uh, was raised and became an orphan as a young adult. She was raised in a fairly well-off family in the East Coast. Uh, but she shocked her family by marrying an undocumented man. I think he was the gardener, but that might be a myth. At any rate, she had two kids with him and, uh, he was eventually deported in one of the regular deportation things that happened. And, uh, she was a licensed therapist who ran Whitebird and was personally one of my huge, uh, influence on my life. And I just wanna get this in the record somewhere of, I am not surprised that this cahoots program is coming out of Whitebird because I feel like her spirit, if not her actual work, is, is still in that building and that organization. What I really like about this is, uh, well, one is that the team, when they interact with someone, they do follow-up and they do one-on-one, hands-on. Let's see what we can do for you right now, let me drive you there, let me help you. I think this is outside the kind of purview of police, they usually can't do that sort of thing, but it's, it's really what's needed for a lot of it. That 86% of their calls involve no police at all is an astonishingly wonderful record. And, uh, kind of what we expect, but it's really good to hear. Uh, the biggest thing, the biggest deal about this is that the people in crisis will have someone coming to their aid who is not wearing a gun and does not have that forced, uh, potential violence. And for that alone, I think this is such an important program. I wanna suggest that you, uh, reach out to Sebastopol as you're thinking about a sort of southern county, uh, collaboration here. I know they're also getting some, uh, reporting about police violence and, uh, considering different options. So, um, I just, you know, I think that they're a good mix for this, this project. Other than that, I'd just say go forth and good luck and I'll be following it with, with great excitement.
Thank you, Ms. Lobby.
Marith Wiseman, go ahead.
I so wanna thank the council for taking this work so seriously. Um, this, uh, has, I, I'm still a new resident in Cattati, I've been here a year and maybe two weeks. And, but I've been an activist my entire life and I have never experienced being treated with, you know, so seriously by the elected officials in my area. Um, as you, I think, probably remember, I helped present on cahoots, um, over, maybe over the summer or something and the early fall. And to see this being discussed so seriously and looks to me like this is our future, I just wanna say thank you, thank you so much, I am so proud to be a Cattati resident.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman.
Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Hello, I think you already know how I feel about the exploration and the, what I hope is the intent and follow the cahoots model. City council meeting. Well, at more than one, I have been very clear about my personal support for the whole notion of cahoots. Let me share a personal experience with you. It's weeks ago. Leading up to this event, my 18-year-old granddaughter who lives in Sebastopol with her parents, uh, was having a tremendous amount of difficulty with anxiety and depression. And then she moved into rage. And this is hard for me to talk about. Um, one night, it was a Friday night. He was so enraged, for days she had been hoarding food and not eating and angry with her parents. And he pulled up into her room and her parents did not know what else to do on this Friday night, but called the police. And right after doing that, my daughter Bronwyn called me and told me what was going on. And I said, Bronwyn, call them back and ask for the MST's. And she said, what are they? I said, I can't remember what it stands for, but we need them on this call. Have them call them. By the time I got to the house in Sebastopol, the MST's were there as well as the police. My granddaughter was still raging. The MST's came down, I was able to talk with them, uh, for a little bit. The police ended up escorting her in handcuffs to the vehicle that they took her to Kaiser in because she could not calm down. This was a perfect opportunity for cahoots, not for the mobile support team that doesn't have the training that the cahoots team will have. We need cahoots in our county, in our city, in our region. I am so glad that this looks like it is going to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears, and thank you for sharing your personal insight on that.
Mayor Moore, it appears that that will end public comment.
Thank you very much, I'll bring it back to the council. Um, my understanding of this is that this is something that we're exploring and still receiving a lot of input and information on. And I believe, um, our city manager is working with the other cities and with Mr. Clymer and Chief Parish to, to, uh, explore this a little further. Would that be correct, Mr. Obed?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, so with that, there is, um, it's a presentation, so we don't currently have any action on that, if I'm correct, until we get, until more information is presented to the council. Okay?
Correct, yeah, we're waiting on, um, the results of the information that, um, Mr. Clymer described during the presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Clymer, do you have an ETAM when you might be able to have a, a greater level of information on that?
Um, I, I got the, the Excel spreadsheet with all the call chronologies today. Um, that's five, that's 500 calls, that's gonna take me a little bit of time to work through. And then I'm going to be, um, compiling some of that, all that data into a report. Um, so it, it certainly won't be a week, let's go with that. Um, but it, it, uh, hopefully won't be more than, uh, a month to, you know, five weeks or so.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Lemon, you had a further question? Or comment?
Yeah, I just wanna comment and respond to a couple of good comments and a question from public comment. Uh, first, we hear you about Sebastopol, you're probably not surprised we're already thinking that way. There was unofficial discussions early in the process. I will tell you originally the way I saw this going, and things always change. Uh, but I saw this as potentially Sebastopol, Cattati and Petaluma. Uh, Roner Park is, is, um, kind of a last-minute pleasant surprise, a really good pleasant surprise in this process, I think, at an unofficial level. And they're obviously together for years, so we have that natural ability. But there are some geographical concerns that potentially, uh, make it slightly more difficult there. And they have the potential for perhaps other service in that region, West County. Uh, so they have a little more to assess and that's why I think they're not ready to jump just yet and move into having their assessment done by, uh, Ben. So I'll just say though, to Ms. Crump Shear's statement, she really made the case for the value that something like, uh, and I'm gonna use Sonoma, South Sonoma safety rather than saying cahoots, cause I like the sound of that, uh, can bring compared to MST. We all know MST has been good and valuable, but it's clear that this is much, much better. And what I really like and what I really hope if we can manage as a region, this, this small region here, we can pull all our cities together and find a way to work together and make a singular entity to do this, we can perhaps drive the county then in the longer term to elevate the service. They provide MST to match cahoots as what I believe would be an emerging better standard. So one more goal for this for us, but just to put out there and perhaps for staff as discussions go forward, this is why it's so important for us to regionalize this because there, there's the things we can get out of it. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemon. Well, it, it's certainly a, a critical topic and something that is, um, that is positive moving forward and would make a lot more sense. So, uh, I will look forward to seeing that coming back to the council in the near future. And, um, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, set up some sort of program that would benefit everybody on that, so. Thank you again, Mr. Clymer, I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you so much, I really appreciate the time and, um, all the great questions and the comments and, um, and take it easy. And, uh, you know, maybe I'll run into some of you and I'm, they're training the team sometime soon, so, take it easy.
Thank you again. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 12, our city manager's report.
Mayor Moore, we actually have.
Yeah, I think we actually, I was just gonna say we have the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation presentation first.
Oh, my bad.
We turned around a bit tonight, so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so, um.
I thought it was going too well.
So tonight with us, we have, uh, Lisa Hullett with, uh, the county of Sonoma, she's with, um, PRMB and she is the, uh, she is leading the county-wide multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation planning process, which, uh, we are plugged into. And, um, on our team, on the city side, we have Katie Duran, who is, uh, taking the lead for us on this and engaging with Lisa. And, um, we're doing a great job and this is quickly moving, uh, moving forward. So with that, I will, uh, hand it off to Lisa to give the presentation on the, on what this is all about.
Thank you, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Lemon, uh, city council members, uh, city manager Obed and staff. First, I wanna say what a pleasure it's been working with staff, Katie Duran, she's been tremendous throughout this process. And we can move to the next slide. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what, uh, hazard mitigation planning is, what it isn't. Um, an overview of the, uh, planning process, the mission goals and objectives, hazard, um, the story map which provides data which underpins, uh, vulnerability via vulnerability analysis and the hazard and a timeline to completion. Um, next slide. Um, so in emergency management, for those who are, um, not aware, mitigation is just one component. Um, so we're talking about a hazard mitigation plan. So this is not preparedness, this is not go-bags, this is not planning, this is not response. You know, that falls firmly in the hands of the Department of Emergency Management and is not recovery. It is risk reduction projects and risk reduction to. It is risk reduction projects and risk reduction to avoid impacts of natural hazards. Next slide. So in disaster planning, there's two types of planning processes. The hazard mitigation plan, which I'm gonna be talking about, is proactive, develops actions to reduce or eliminate risk from future hazard events, and identifies implementation priorities based on an in-depth local hazard assessment. And that differs from an emergency operations plan, which is reactive, establishes overall operational concepts, and details emergency management for any significant emergency or disaster. So mitigation is reduce, reducing risk. Emergency operation is when the disaster happens, how we respond. Next slide, please. So, you know, a mitigation plan establishes a broad local vision and guiding principles. So this plan, we started in 2019. The county and its partners, including the city of Patati, embarked on a planning process to develop a multi-jurisdiction hazard plan. And this plan is an official statement of the county's hazards, vulnerability analysis, and the mitigation process. Next slide, please. So the Disaster Management Act of 2000 requires that local governments and special purpose districts have a hazard mitigation plan in order to access specific types of federal funding, specifically FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding, community development block grant mitigation funding, and a new program which coming, which is coming down the pipe from FEMA called Building Resilient Infrastructures in Communities. A community or a local government must have a hazard mitigation plan or be part of a hazard mitigation plan to access those types of funding. So the county has previously had a local hazard mitigation plan, meaning the plan was just specific to the unincorporated areas of the county. That plan was completed in 2016 and adopted in 2017. This was prior to the recognition that we have a significant wildfire problem in Sonoma County. So after the Sonoma Complex fire of 2017, the California Office of Emergency Service says, really encouraged the county to take a hard look at how we could coordinate better with the cities, towns, and special purpose districts, because as we know, hazards don't care where we draw boundaries. And in order to have policies that take into account coordinating efforts or coordinating actions, or at least we're all aware of what each other is doing to reduce risk, makes the most sense. Next slide, please. So as I was mentioning, you know, why a multi-jurisdictional hazard plan versus a local hazard mitigation plan? A number of the towns had local hazard mitigation plans, but the multi-jurisdiction process hopefully enhances public awareness, creates a decision tool across political boundaries for community leaders, and then it promotes compliance with state and federal programs to take full advantage of federal disaster grants. I mentioned FEMA's new program, which is the Building Resilient Infrastructures in Communities program. This program launched last year with a national funding cap of $50 million. This year and for the next three years, it's gonna be $30 billion. This is probably a one time only when that amount of capital will be invested through FEMA to go to disaster risk reduction, which includes environmental protections, infrastructure projects such as generators and whatnot. And so to access that funding, the county and the participating jurisdictions need to be part of a hazard mitigation plan. It really is a funding vehicle, unlike a lot of plans which have dual purposes. Next slide, please. So what's different? You know, we've adjusted the plan to reflect a multi-jurisdiction approach. We have new hazard data as a result of the 2017 wildfires. The FEMA flood maps have also been updated since the last planning process, and we're addressing the health pandemic based on lessons we learned from 2020. Now, those lessons learned haven't been fully realized, so while we, it is, there is going to be a mention of how the pandemic has affected our community. Actions in this plan are, will not be addressed until the annual update. Next slide, please. So the participating jurisdictions, the county of Sonoma, the city of Santa Rosa, the town of Windsor, the city of Patati, the city of Sonoma, Sonoma County, Ag and Open Space, Rancho Doby Fire Protection District, Geyserville Fire Protection District, North Sonoma Coast Fire Protection District, Florida Dale Fire Protection District, Timber Cove Fire Protection District, Sonoma County Fire Protection District, Gold Ridge Resource Conservation District, and Sonoma Resource Conservation District. The plan itself will be two volumes. The first volume will be the regional overview of the vulnerabilities and the hazards that are contained, you know, countywide. Each of the participating jurisdictions will have its own annex, which reflects the actions and the local character of that community. So autonomy in terms of applying for funding or actions will not be engulfed in the larger county program, because each jurisdiction is developing its own priorities and the strategic actions. Next slide, please. This planning process has been led by a steering committee, of which the city of Patati is a part of, that has guided the overall movement of the plan. The steering committee has been held monthly since July of 2009, 2020, oh, 2019, 2020. And it, it has contained members of the environmental community, participating jurisdictions, and environmental community, meaning Pepperwood Preserve, the Nature Conservancy, and then business organizations, the wine grape growers, North Coast Builders Exchange, and then participating jurisdictions, including Sonoma Water, which has their own hazard mitigation plan, but is very much participating in this process. And I want to step back and say, you know, some of the cities and towns, like Sebastopol or Petaluma, are not participating at this point in the planning process, but that doesn't mean we aren't coordinating. It just means they've decided to develop their own plan, or they were in a just different phase, they had already adopted a plan within this timeframe, or they were in the, or they had gotten funding and decided to go on their own. But we are still very much coordinating, and the vulnerability analysis and the hazards are throughout the county. There's no gray area in the maps that I will show you. So the, like many plans, this one has a mission statement, goals, and objectives. Each of the actions are driven by the mission statement. So the mission statement that was developed by the steering committee is create a resilient Sonoma County for the whole community. The whole community is defined by not only the property owners, but those residents, the vulnerable populations. It encompasses what is considered the federal definition for equity, because they don't quite have a definition of equity that is agreed upon nationally. But what they, but what they, meaning FEMA, has agreed upon is that we can look at the whole community. Next slide, please. So I, the goals. So each of the action items has, is aligned with a planned goal. And then the objectives, which I'll show you. I think the goals, you know, protect people, minimize loss of life, injury, and social impacts, minimize potential for loss of property, economic and social impacts and displacement due to hazards, minimize potential for environmental damage, somehow a word got dropped, but it's damage, communicate natural hazard risk to the whole community, support and inform relevant mitigation policies and programs, promote and adaptive and resilient Sonoma County, and pursue the development and implementation of long-term, cost-effective, and environmentally sound mitigation projects, enhance the capability, capacity of the Sonoma County planning area to prepare, respond, and recover for the impact of natural hazards. And then next slide. So the objectives, with, so each of the actions or projects are tied to an objective, a goal, and ultimately rolled up into the mission statement. And so the objectives are encourage the incorporation of mitigation, best management practices, and the plan's codes and other regulatory standards. And at this time, I'd like to say, one of the things the plan is, is a plan. What it is not is a policy. It will inform via Assembly Bill 2140, the general plan's safety element, but it is not in and of itself a policy. It is a funding mechanism and a planning document. So some of the, also retrofit, purchase, or relocate structures in high-hazard areas. This includes home hardening, for wildfires, fire, I can talk at 9:30 at night, seismic retrofit, elevating homes in flood areas, promote and implement hazard mitigation plans, increase resilience of community lifelines. Community lifelines are a new term for critical infrastructure. FEMA, in their new program, has decided to change terms on up. So what was previously called critical infrastructure, hospitals, schools, are now called community lifelines. And then consider the impacts of natural hazards and all planning mechanisms that address current and future land use within the planning area. Again, this speaks to policies that a jurisdiction or the county may want to incorporate into planning documents. Next slide, please. So the hazards that have been identified are probably not a huge surprise. Wildfire, earthquake, sea level rise, landslide, flood, and tsunami. Next slide, please. The ranking of the hazards, and this is Sonoma County writ-all, it may not be specific to Patati. Wildfire, earthquake includes liquefaction and dam failure. As I said, we're working with Sonoma Water to, because even though they may have the jurisdiction over the dams, should a dam fail, it impacts, you know, the downstream, you know, it impacts more than just what they have control over. Flood, drought, extreme weather, and landslides. Next slide, please. Vulnerabilities, like what, what type of vulnerabilities are we looking at in terms of planning? Certainly, you know, people and property. People, public buildings, residential, commercial buildings, infrastructure, natural resources, and cultural resources. This includes both federally, federal, state, federal resources as well as state. Next slide, please. The mitigation actions. So these are the projects that the various jurisdictions will look to fund that are aligned with the mission, goals, and objectives. So to protect public safety, prevent loss of life and property, and reduce harm to existing and future development, buildings, businesses, infrastructure, and parks. Next slide, please. So the response part of it is more in the realm of emergency management, but one of the things that we're doing with this hazard mitigation plan is we're gonna be annexing in the Sonoma County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is in an update process. And that plan will have evacuation zones and routes. It will also include recovery planning and removal of wildland fuels, such as, you know, in those spaces where we have vegetation management issues, but also defensible space that hundred feet outside the home, wetland restoration and preservation, and perhaps floodplain management, and allowing non-structural mitigation of floods. So perhaps a jurisdiction such as Sebastopol or another jurisdiction along the Russian River would look at areas where the flood, where it might make sense to look at easements or other floodplain, non-structural floodplain enhancements. Next slide, please. So I kind of went through this, but prevention, property protection, public awareness, emergency services, structural projects, climate resilience, and community capacity building. These are all sorts of things that FEMA is looking to fund and wants, the current administration is putting a significant investment in projects that address infrastructure and also build resilience in communities. Next slide, please. So the requirements for mitigation actions, you have to have a strategy, a responsible department, a funding source, a completion date, a priority, and a relative cost. This is something each jurisdiction will have to determine on its own. I believe the city of Patati has a consultant in place helping to move this component of the program along. The county is overseeing the regional assessment, or the volume one that I talked about, and its own strategies for the unincorporated parts of the county. But each jurisdiction, and these are actually due on Friday, is developing their own mitigation actions. Next slide, please. So I will send out a link to this, but one of the really cool things for a data person like me is the Sonoma County Hazard Plan Story Map. So this story map allows, it's live, and it allows anyone who goes to this hub to look at opportunities to participate in the planning process, projects that the county or the planning partners, like the city, are doing, that move forward actions in the plan, the hazards that exist, the, how those hazards, if they were to be fully realized, how they impact the population, the number of buildings, and the economic impact, and I'm gonna show you an example of that, and a hazard mapping tool. So someone can put in their address and find out, you know, which of the hazards most impact their area, or they can draw a buffer around it, see within two miles, you know, what's, what's going on. Next slide, please. So this is an example that I pulled up of City Hall, using the hazard map. So one of the hazards are the Hundred Year Flood, and should the Hundred Year Flood occur on, at 201 West Sierra- And should the hundred year flood occur on, at 201 West Sierra Avenue? Um, the metric that I chose was number of structures exposed, but you can also choose population, you can, you choose, uh, the, the damage it would cost in millions or billions or, you know, whatever that damage is. And so it's a really useful planning tool when developing po, uh, policy. And it's really important to see where the hazards exist in your town. And that can inform permitting, it can inform, you know, future build out, it can inform where you cite certain critical infrastructure and where the priorities are for the development of projects.
Ms. Hewlett, I need to introduce you for just a moment, and I'm sorry to do that. We have procedure where anytime we go beyond ten, we have to vote that that's acceptable to the rest of the panel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. If you just bear with me for a minute, I would ask the, uh, council member if we would have a motion to extend beyond ten P M.
Oh, moved, Councilmember.
And I'll second that, Vice Mayor Lindman.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess, a quick roll call would be appreciated.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lindman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Hewlett. Um, even though I tried to skip over you earlier, the floor is yours again.
I didn't realize it was even past my bedtime. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so I'm going to go over in brief some of the assessments that you can find, you know, in, on the hazard story map, but I really encourage you to peruse it yourself because I find it to be really interesting to, um, just look and see the type of data that we were able to compile from, both from public resources and from the newest wildfire data in order to capture where the risk is. So, uh, the Sonoma County Wildfire Hazard Index is a model that we use to predict relative wildfire hazard on the landscape, um, reflecting conditions through the 2018 fire season. Next slide. So I used, you know, what used to be my office, um, and now is, is very different. So at PRMD, uh, where the fire hazard is, and I used about a, I don't know, a mile buffer around the off, the office to show, you know, where the very low to the high fire is, you know, it's probably not surprising to anyone, um, in the county where the high fire is that you can see and which contradicts what we have learned from experience, that even in very low wildfire areas, there can be a significant fire. If that's because of these ember-driven events, um, such as we had in 2017 and such as we continue to experience, which, um, defines what our historic fire conditions are and will, you know, will be shaping how Cal Fire and others look at ranking wildfire risk, not only in Sonoma County, but in a lot of areas along, in California that are also experiencing a significant change in, um, weather patterns and in climate, which are increasing our, uh, susceptibility to catastrophic wildfire. Next slide. And so this is the entirety of Sonoma County. Um, I would say this map will, you know, where the green areas are, um, might be turning a little bit more to yellow as time goes on. And it's something, you know, that is based on my discussions with wildfire experts, but the data is not as recent as I would, you know, it's 2021, which is amazing to me that it's 2021 and 2018 data is already, you know, slightly obsolete. When I wrote this, the grant for this plan, it was in 2018. And I also received some other hazard mitigation funding to do on-the-ground work. And since that's the time of writing the grant and now, some of those areas have already burnt down twice. So things are changing. And so the maps will, this is a very much a living document and, um, will be changing over time. Next slide, please. Um, for earthquake hazards, we looked at, uh, poor shake map scenarios, Hayward, Ma Kama, Rogers Creek and San Andreas. Um, that is, you know, we have yet to experience, you know, a significant seismic event in Sonoma County, but it is something that, you know, there is a significant chance that the Rogers Creek Fault is overdue. And so to be prepared and identify those structures that are most at risk should a, uh, seismic event of seven or greater happen is something we need to think about. Next slide, please. Um, with, I'm just going to briefly go through some maps which are both, are both going to be part of the plan and are available on the story map. So vulnerability of emergency services in the event of a seismic, uh, in the event of a significant earthquake. Next slide. Um, shaking potential. So should there be a earthquake hazard, you know, where is the highest shaking potential? It's, um, it's pretty significant in Sonoma County, you know? If the Rogers Creek Fault were to have a significant event, we, it's really something to both prepare for and in terms of mitigating the risk for, you know, retrofitting structures, um, is one of the actions that we are looking at for future funding in the unincorporated part of the county. And I, I know the city of Santa Rosa is looking about as well. Next slide, please. Um, so flood hazard. Um, there is something called a firm map, flood insurance rate map that fee, that are, you know, drives your insurance rates if you're in a flood zone. FEMA has recently updated those maps and those updated maps are available on the story map. There are some areas which were not previously in the, um, high flood zone area like the Barlow, which are now in there. Um, next slide, please. Uh, one of the issues which may, you know, is not a Cattati issue, but the repetitive loss. The Russian River has the highest number of repetitive loss for structures which have experienced flood damage, um, more than once in the entire country. We, we have a, uh, very high repetitive loss, uh, issue in the county. And one of the, uh, actions that we have been doing and will continue to do is elevating structures out of the flood plain. But I'm also a huge proponent of non-structural mitigation of flood. The river needs to be, should go where the river needs to go because nature is stronger than we are. Um, that is my soapbox ready to him. Um, next slide, please. So the timeline. Um, as I mentioned, we had the action items which drive the projects that the city would like to see are due to, um, me and the consultant on, on Friday. We anticipate that there will be a review of both volume one and volume two, um, by June first, at which time we would also like to put that out to stakeholders, um, or not stakeholders, our steering committee, committee members and count, our various county councils to look at and review prior to the public comment period. Um, we have a two-week public comment period built in, which is a requirement of FEMA. Um, the reason for this, what might be considered a short public comment period is because we want jurisdictions and the county to be able to apply for this BRIC funding. And the notice of funding opportunity is coming out September of this year. So FEMA has, their typical turnaround time is 30 days, but I do not have, uh, the ability to move the federal government. And, um, I wish I did. They could take longer, they could take shorter, but that allows us, so once FEMA provides their review, then that plan is considered approved pending adoption. And that would allow the city to apply for BRIC funding. Um, but does, um, doesn't mean you necessarily adopt that plan, but it means that FEMA has deemed it acceptable to move forward. So when, uh, the question is asked, if you have a, a hazard mitigation plan, you would just put that APA and that allows you to apply for funding. Um, the county board of supervisors, date for review and potential adoption is December seventh, 2021. That is on our board calendar of when we are looking to adopt that. Uh, each of the towns and cities can adopt their plan on a different timeframe. No one is holding anyone up once we get that FEMA approval pending adoption. Next slide, please. And, um, you can find the information on the planning process at this website. The story map is also there and I'm also happy to send the link out. I, there's no chat box or anything, otherwise I populated in there. Um, the email is prmd-hazardmitigation@sonomacounty-county.org. But you can also email me directly because it's the same thing, lisa.hewlett@sonomacounty-county.org. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hewlett, for that information. Ms. Duren, did you want to add anything to that or that's pretty well covered?
Um, no, I think Lisa did a great job. Thank you, Lisa. You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Thanks for the introduction to the plan. Um, I'm, I'm, just want to make sure I'm clear that Cattati section, Cattati's section, um, in volume two, so Cattati's jurisdictional piece of this will serve as our required local hazard mitigation plan? Or is there a separate local hazard mitigation plan that we have to develop?
No, that will serve, it, so the Cattati's component of this is an annex into the larger plan and it will serve as, you know, all of us must submit together to FEMA, but as individual, uh, governments, we can adopt our particular part independently. So you don't have to have your own plan and the county takes on the responsibility of the annual maintenance and updating.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Are there actions within the more broad plan that the county is submitting, um, that apply to Cattati or are the actions that we want to take, which contain within our annexes?
Um, they could be applied to the, to Cattati and once we all submit our various, you know, action plans, then there will be a crosswalk by the consultant to, and by, you know, as a coordinating team to determine where there could be, um, partnerships. And that doesn't take away from the autonomy, say, of, you know, Cattati wanting to go for funding for one thing where the county is identified as a partner. And it does, you know, it, it just shows where we're coordinating because one thing, um, I was on the national review panel for this BRIC program to learn how it works. And one thing they really emphasize in that program more than they have previously is partnerships. So to the extent that we can show that, you know, we recognize that we're, we're one family, um, so to speak, is, is, you know, in our favor from a funding perspective and also I think from a community perspective. I have lived in many of the communities in Sonoma County for the past 25 years. And as we know, a lot of people who live in places don't under, you know, don't, it's not their business to understand the boundaries.
One other question I had was, um, is when we submit our annex this Friday and then we come back later to adopt our plan, uh, can we refine, continue to refine and make changes to the plan or is it sort of locked?
Yes, um, so after the plan is adopted, then there's an, there is an annual requirement to, you know, look at the plan, but, uh, projects can be added. It's, it's viewed as a living document. Um, it's just at this one specific moment in time when FEMA reviews it, they're looking at the vulnerability and the analysis and the hazard analysis and that we have a plan to address. But as long as those main components do not change, projects can be added on an annual basis. So you don't have to think of everything, you know, by Friday. Um, and it's actually sets you up for success, if less is more, because then it shows on an annual basis that to FEMA, that the projects you've identified, that they're doable, that you're going for funding for them and it's not everything in the kitchen sink that comes out of the FEMA guidebook, that it's specific.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewlett. So I, I imagine at this point, um, I can open it up for public comments, uh, real quickly and then bring it back to the council for further direction.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I'll look to our attendees for any raised hands. And that will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, now I'll bring it back to the council then. Are there any further questions or any other direction than, than, uh, uh, a consensus going forward on this? I don't know that we need a vote on this. Okay, so we're all in consensus that this is appropriate? Councilmember Harvey?
Uh, yes, I was curious as to, um, whether our plan will be brought back to us so that we can, uh, review that at a future agenda.
I would assume it would be, but I don't know if that's my question or not.
I think it's a more of a Damian question.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so, um, Lisa or Katie, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I, but, um, when the, when this, uh, when the draft plan gets put out for public comment on June fifteenth, I believe it is, um, it's going to be available publicly to everybody to review, including the actions, proposed actions. And, um, and then it's going to have to, uh, well, I think that's, my understanding is that's the main kind of public comment, including council to weigh in on it. And after that, um, my understanding of the process is then it goes, um, it gets finalized after the comments are received. It goes to CAL O E S and FEMA for review. And then it comes back to the city council to adopt the, the volume one, the overall plan and then the city's annexed. Um, but I don't think, once it's come back from FEMA, we can change it until, um, it's been adopted. And then, as Lisa said, then it could be, um, projects or actions can be updated throughout the life of the plan.
Yes, that's correct.
So what you're saying is, is that we can only see it in June as private citizens? And if we have any questions or comments, we as private, private citizens make those questions and comments. We don't as a council get to kind of go over what was submitted?
We, so we have a, we do have a meeting on the 22nd of June if the council so desires, um, alter the public review process. alter the public review process. I could bring it to council, and then we could, you guys could have a formal discussion about it if you'd like.
I feel, that's just me, I feel that would be beneficial. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember Sparks?
I agree with Councilmember Harvey. I would like to have some opportunity for us to see the actions that were turning in. And I noticed that public review period ends on June 30th, and then it's getting turned in on July 1st. So I don't know whether, if we meet on June 22nd, whatever the date was, will there actually be an opportunity for any of our feedback to be incorporated?
And I think I need, my, my timeline, I neglected to write in the time that it will take to incorporate the public comment. So I would say that submitted to FEMA is actually after the 4th of July weekend. I got a little ambitious thinking I was going to do it overnight with everyone else, you know, burning the midnight oil, and that's not going to happen. So it'll be a few days. And the way I've understood, you know, the process, so we are also having a public informational webinar on the 21st of June. So that would be one day before your, your council meeting. And where the public, we will be presenting the plan, the public will have, you know, we're going to be doing a full social media, you know, outreach, you know, giving an asset package to each of the jurisdictions to use. And then there'll be annex-specific breakout rooms where people who live in the city of Cattati can look at that, their specific, you know, part of the plan and have questions answered that are specific to, you know, their questions. So yes, the, the timeline for submittals, not, not July 1st, but likely after the 4th of July. But as soon as possible in order to give FEMA the, the chance to get it back as soon as possible so that everyone can apply for funding.
And I'll just add too that the, the annex is our plan. So if we have comments on it, it certainly can be incorporated.
Okay, great, thank you.
So to my fellow councilmembers, Sparks and Harvey, if this is not a policy, yet it's a plan, what would you envision may be changing?
I would like to just be able to see what actions we have listed in case there's anything that's sort of, you know, an urgent need that, that we might want to add. It's something we might want to secure funding for.
Councilmember Harvey?
And I'm not saying that I want to change anything, but, you know, it would be nice for us, since this is our plan and we represent our constituents, it would be nice for us to go over that and have an understanding of what's put in there on our constituents' behalf, rather than, you know, having to, to kind of read it on our own and not kind of discuss where, you know. Again, without seeing it, it's hard, kind of hard to comment and say, oh, well, what about this, or what about this, or what were you thinking, you know, when you put this in? It gives us the opportunity to ask those questions. So that we're prepared in case someone asks us. That's all.
Thank you very much. Well, with that, Ms. Hulet, thank you very much. Ms. Duran, thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I appreciate that your, your meetings, you know, are so well thought out, even late into the night. I applaud you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. With that, it's now 10:20. I think some people may need just a five-minute bio break before we move on to the city manager's report. I have a thumbs up on that, yeah? No? Fine, let's roll into it. It's all yours, Mr. Obed.
All right, I'll be, I'll be quick to talk to Paul. Just a quick update on COVID. So as you probably know, the FDA has recently cleared children ages 12 to 15 for the Pfizer vaccine. So that's a first for under, the under 16 group. Currently, as we stand tonight, 69% of Sonoma County adults are fully or partially vaccinated. 53% are fully vaccinated. And we continue to be in the orange tier. And just a couple reminders, 32 million in rental and utility payment assistance is out there from prior legislation that can be signed up for. Applications open on the county website on April 19th. And then also, we're expecting more information from the governor with regard to what follows the, the color tier system going away on June 15th. Drought, as we talked about earlier, there's a lot of talk about that due to the dry weather we've been experiencing the last couple of years. And we're going to be back at the next council meeting to talk more about it. And we're looking at adopting a 20% voluntary drought conservation resolution. For the projects on West Sierra, so we, this is slightly paused in there right now while materials are arriving. But we expect the Water Street and Cypress Avenue crosswalk improvements to be installed beginning on May 26th. So that's coming up here shortly. These are flashing lights activated by push buttons. And the Page Street crossing, which I know has been of interest to some people, has been repaired, but they're waiting on some final wiring to get it activated. And finally, just a reminder that the local road safety plan is still out there on the website. And if you want to comment on concerns about traffic conditions, that's the place to do it. And then today, we opened bids on the paving project for the Bird section and the community center re-roof project. So expect to see these construct, these award items coming to council here soon. The good news is that the apparent low bidder for the roofing seems to be essentially the same as the engineer's estimate, so that's good. And the paving low bid was almost 30% below the engineer's estimate, so that's, that's great. And community development, you might be interested to know that all the permits for Kessin Ranch have been issued, including the BMR units. So as some of you may recall, when this project was getting entitled, they were estimating about three years to get all the permits issued. That has not been the case. They've issued all the permits pretty much within the year because they're basically selling those units as fast as they can build them. Housing element, RFP is expected to be issued in the next two weeks to get that rolling. And we'll be bringing that forward soon. Also, the Gateway Design Survey has been completed with over 35 people, citizens participating, and providing their input with option B being the most desired design, if you often remember what that was. And so we're just working with the consultants to finalize design details, and we'll be moving those into construction drawings to hopefully get them ready at some point to put them out to bid. Just as some, just to report back on the distracted driving and special targeted enforcement that happened in April. The Cattati Police Department issued 110 citations during the month of April for people who violated the state's cell, hands-free cellphone law. So it's good. And then finally, we also talked about this earlier, but the bikes wear every day is next Friday. So we're partnering again with Yuba Bikes. And anyone that wants to ride by and stop by for coffee and snacks and help us, or, and help us see how many cyclists we can count. Cattati camp registration is open and filling fast. We're already sold out for the first three weeks and getting more signups daily. And we're also hosting nine weeks of summer camp and also doing our CIT program in conjunction with that. So that's a good training program for teenagers. And then we're also doing multiple children's theater camps this summer for ages 4 to 18, and gymnastics camps ages 48. And we recommend registering soon before they're just sold out. We're also starting the, are excited to see the farmer's markets coming back in June on Wednesday evenings, so that's starting early June. And then on July, or June 4th, sorry, we're bringing back our drive-in movie at the Park and Ride out there on St. Joseph's. So we're showing The Little Rascals movie. And you can sign up online for your vehicle. Expected to sell it quickly as all of our drives out, drive-ins have sold out in advance of the show. So if you have any interest in attending, sign up soon for that. On June 19th, we're hosting our annual community yard sale again in the Cattati Room. And we're accepting donations on the 17th and 18th. And proceeds go to benefit the rec programming. And any questions, always, you can always contact Ashley at awilson@catatiscity.org, or just look on our website and Facebook page and Instagram page for more information. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. Councilmember Ford, I think it was the signage program B that you were in favor of?
Say it one more time?
I thought the signage program, option B, was the one that you were in favor of?
Oh, was it? Good. I was going to try to dig up that packet and figure it out.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay. Now we'll move on to city council member reports. None tonight? Vice Mayor Lemon?
Sorry, but this one, just one, but it's kind of important for us. So want to just quick report out from SETA, our CPA yesterday, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority specifically. You may remember, we discussed Quick Strike funding. Just like the name implies, it came out of the blue, they wanted projects quick. We've managed to compete. We asked for $1,250,000. That's the good news, we were accepted. The good, not quite as good news is we were only funded for $900,000. So that's a shortfall of about $350,000, about 25%. Less than ideal, but still doable. But the good news is, there's more funding from MTC, and they've decided to, not quite a second round for Quick Strike, but to throw some more funding at it, if that makes sense. And we should see assessments of how our county share should work out. We should have roughly $1.3 million available. So in the meeting packet, we were asked to consider adding a county plan that was previously passed over for about $1 million, which had been changed up and is a very good plan, was well worth supporting. But it didn't mention the shortfall for Cattati, nor did it mention that Sebastopol actually received no funding for their plan. So I did move the item, but I asked for support in this manner, for full funding for Cattati, Sebastopol, as well as adding the county plan. And that motion did carry. Now, of course, this decision isn't sadly fully made by SETA. MTC will do this. And they usually don't kind of share, at least till everything's done, why they do what they do. So who knows? But that's the direction we're giving at least, and I think the chances are good we see more funding out of this to make this just a little easier to program. So wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I'll be very quick, since Damian reported on the water shortage. We did approve the resolution at the Water Advisory Committee. Now each of the cities will be doing their own specific resolution. So things are not looking great. It's pretty dry out there. And so they will be doing a lot of outreach to help folks get the message that this is voluntary. Sure you've all seen different articles in the newspaper on this. So we'll belabor the point. We just need to conserve because we don't have very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey? I don't see any other hands up on the council side for council member reports, so we'll move on to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Mayor Moreau, I see no public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. And any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you. We will be moving to closed session. Conference with city labor negotiator and government code section 495.7.6. City designated representative, city manager and designee, employee organization, Cattati Employees Association, and unrepresented employee, city manager. Do we need to take public comment on those closed session items first?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any comment, public comment on those items?
I see no public comment.
Thank you very much. We will now go into closed session. It is 10:32. I will see you in the breakout room at 10:37. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harvey.
So is it quiet down at Khatari City Council Chamber, George Lauren?
It's pretty quiet.
Aren't we quick?
All we need is the mayor.
We lost the mayor?
Need to use the buddy system next time.
That's right.
You know, Mark, that is one of your responsibilities is...
I'd be happy to fill in there and report after we have nothing to report out. And without, I'm happy to adjourn our meeting at 12:13.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time.
Thank you for stepping in for that crucial duty.
It got us out of here quicker. You know you haven't motivated.
Bye, everyone.